Okay, according to the official time, it is 5:30, so welcome to the Tuesday, December 14th, City Commission work session, and we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is a work session tonight, so we won't be taking any votes. We have three items for discussion, and the first one is Riley County Police Department update. And so I think Director Butler from RCPD will take the stage.
Take the stand. Good evening, Mayor Butler and members of the City Commission. Couple of things that I know you're probably very interested in is, and I'll start with those first. The first one is the shooting that happened in Aggieville early Sunday morning. At 3:45 this afternoon, we made an arrest in that case. We arrested a man by the name of Josh Cummings, who is a resident of Fort Riley. We did a lot of work in this case. There was a lot of people in that establishment when this happened. It was very chaotic when it occurred. Fortunately, we had a couple of officers who were right next door in the Aggieville substation when this happened. They actually heard the shots and immediately responded. They did have some difficulty getting in the establishment due to the number of people that were rushing out. I do want to make it clear that there's no evidence at all at this stage, and I don't think we'll develop any, that this was some sort of active shooting incident. And what I mean by that, we don't believe someone went in with the intent to randomly and indiscriminately kill as many people as they could. It doesn't appear to be that at all. The arrest occurred because of good old-fashioned police work and cooperation from our citizens. I often talk about that aspect of what we do and why Riley County overall is such a safe place to live is because the citizens here don't stand back and watch. When we come out and ask for help and ask questions, they often step forward and assist us, and that's what happened in this case. The investigation is not over with yet. It's still ongoing. There's a lot of work left to be done, but I wanted you to know that we believe that the person, the primary person responsible for what happened was taken into custody this afternoon. And when I talk about cooperation, I would be remiss if I didn't mention Fort Riley officials. In every type of situation that we work with them on, they are always helpful, cooperative. They bend over backwards to make sure that they are not an obstacle in what we do or what we need, and that was true in this instance. In fact, on Thursday, we already had a pre-planned meeting with law enforcement and Fort Riley officials over in Junction City. So we're constantly having those kinds of conversations. So I can't really answer any questions about exactly, you know, what happened, the motive. I think it's just important to let you all know that we've made an arrest. The other thing that we don't do that you know is routine is by policy, we do not release the names of victims and witnesses. Oftentimes, the media will file an open records request. Depending on the status of the case, we can release it. Sometimes we can't. This is an ongoing investigation, so we have not released the name of the victim. We don't plan to release the name of the victim at this stage, again, because it's ongoing. There's more work to be done. So I can't speak to or verify or confirm what other people may be saying about who's involved in this. Do you have any questions before I move on? That was a mouthful before I move on to the next topic. Also, we learned yesterday, since the outset of the pandemic, our correctional facility has only had two inmates test positive for COVID-19, and that occurred when they were actually entering the jail either through an arrest or through a transfer, and it was identified immediately, and they were isolated and quarantined. Yesterday, we were in the process of transferring an inmate who'd been in there quite some time to another correctional facility, and as a standard, we often test those inmates before they leave to make sure we're not sending a COVID-positive inmate to someone else's correctional facility. And the inmate tested positive with a preliminary test, and we tested him a couple of more times, same results. So then we started testing all of the inmates that this person had been housed with, and we ended up with 11 positives, and we have no idea where it came from. So we have ta- we've worked with the Health Department, and we've isolated those inmates and all the others that they were in contact with prior to the positive tests. No staff have tested positive, so we're taking heightened precautions to make sure that we don't end up with the entire jail population infected with COVID. As far as I know, everything we can do, we are doing, and we'll continue along that path. On more pleasant news, soon we will be holding our annual Cops and Kids event. We've raised money, or the FOP has raised money, to take kids shopping at a local retailer, and these are children who otherwise wouldn't have a Christmas that other kids get to enjoy. We are often joined by members of the Potawatomi County Sheriff's Office and K-State Police Department, so that will be occurring soon. We also are, we have a gift box set up in our lobby, the Toys from Manhattan annual event. We are one of the participants in that, so if you have a gift that's unwrapped or something that's barely used that you think a child could enjoy, you can come by our lobby between 8:00 and 5:00, Monday through Friday, and drop it off. Also, we recently held our annual Tip a Cop event, which is a fundraiser for Special Olympics at the Texas Roadhouse. That was about a week and a half ago, and raised $2,500 for Special Olympians that live here in Manhattan. And we also had a renewal of our Victim Services, Victims of Crime Act grant, our VOCA grant, to fund for another year, our crime victim advocate who works out of our detective unit and assists victims here in Riley County whenever they're navigating the court system or have questions about resources or other things that they need to know. Also, just a cautionary bit of information for folks, this time of year, we often see thefts increase, especially with, it's kind of a new thing in recent years, packages being stolen from people's porches after delivery. So we ask people to be on the lookout for what we call porch pirates, whether it's at their house or their neighbor's house. If they see something suspicious, even if they don't know something has happened, please call us and let us know. We'd rather come out and find out it's nothing than wait until afterwards and find out somebody's had a gift or something else stolen. There's a lot of ways you can help protect yourself. You can schedule deliveries with your shipper. You can have the deliveries sent to one of their local facilities and pick it up there. I personally do that when I know I can't be home. Can have a neighbor pick it up. There's a whole host of things. You can track your packages, so you know exactly when it gets there. A lot of people don't know that, so if they have internet access, they can go online and manage their deliveries that way. Also, another way to prevent it, shop locally. Go to your local retailers, buy gifts there if you can, and support the folks that support us in many other ways here in our community. Also, only order if you do order online from reputable, established businesses. Don't order over the phone, and if you're not familiar with somebody who solicits you, you see a lot of facili- excuse me, solicitations on social media that come to you, offering things for sale. Be really careful about that if you didn't look for it. We know those algorithms. Sometimes when we're searching for something, those things will pop up, but be really careful about ordering from organizations that you're unfamiliar with. Last thing on crime overall, still, the crime, Part 1 crime, which, as you know, covers a lot of different categories of violent and property crime. In November, it was 18% above the five-year average, but compared to November of last year, it was seven-plus percent below the same numbers from last year. Again, I'm still perplexed, you know, we were still kind of in a slowdown and a lockdown last year at this time, and so our crime rate compared to that the same month, it was true in October, was lower. September, it was lower. Year-to-date, our crime rate is 5% below the five-year average, so January through November, we're still 5% below the five-year average. Also, in November alone, when you combine both violent and property crime totals, it is slightly above the five-year average, and that occurred, and this is true all the time, theft really drives our Part 1 crime rate. It is the most commonly reported crime, whether it's theft from a car, shoplifting, any type of theft is what drives our crime rate up or down suddenly. And we had, in one night, over 30 thefts from vehicles in Ogden, and every single car was unlocked. And that's not an indictment against Ogden residents, that about half the time when someone has something stolen from a car in Riley County, the car is unlocked. So again, it's just a very easy crime prevention tip. If citizens would lock their cars, hide their valuables, and put them in the trunk, or just make it less attractive for a thief, they often will just walk through a parking lot or down the street, and they'll just try car door handles, and if it's unlocked, they go in and look around and take things. So just encourage people to take more precautions along those lines. That's all I brought with me, but I'll stand for any questions on these issues or anything else you're interested in.
I just want to make one comment. I like what your department's doing on social media. Like you just mentioned the car theft thing, and I was following that. You had a very good map up there. It showed where they were, and it had the advice that you just gave us again, and I hope folks are looking at that, because it's a good way to keep track of what's going on and, you know, remind you of a couple of things. I also saw things about the, you know, various fraud that's going on online, and I think that's very helpful. Great work on that.
Well, thank you. You know, I said it earlier in my comments, you know, there's 111 police officers in this county, and obviously, they can't be everywhere at once and protect everyone, and if, without citizens doing their part and helping us when we need it in serious cases like over the weekend, things would be a lot different here. So thanks and appreciation really goes out to everyone who lives here.
Thanks. No, thank you for the report. Thanks for the update in the Aggieville incident, too. That was, well, it was very violent, and I just wanted to know, I know we can't check for guns. I think that's law now, where, you know, regardless of who you are, concealed carry or open carry are permitted. With that being said, I appreciate the substation being right there. I think you just never know how these things are going to turn out, and late in the night, and with lots of crowded business areas, it's good to have police officers right there to tend to business as needed. Otherwise, there may have been more fatalities or more incidences, I would assume. About the 11 inmates, I was wondering if they were immunized or if vaccines were available to them. Do you know the condition of the inmates and where they are in that process?
We have a healthy supply of both vaccinations. As you know, we have a nurse in the jail and test kits, and if an inmate is showing symptoms, we test them. If they're willing to be tested, if they won't, and they're symptomatic, we isolate them. We also offer vaccines. We have plenty of vaccines, and inmates often will accept them, but it's not something we can make them submit to.
Sure, no, no problem.
We're doing everything we can along those lines to protect them.
Exactly. And so is it Melissa Mosher, the victim advocate, you were saying, that was renewed for the grant?
Yes.
The grant annual. I'm surprised that it's on a grant. Is that a continuous basis where she's going to be funded just with soft money? I would like to see an adequate funding source for that particular position.
Well, most of the, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, that's it.
Most of the money that we receive for any type of grant, especially with personnel, is federal pass-through money. It's granted to the states, then in this case, we apply to the state of Kansas, the Governor's Grants Office, and then they make a decision on the merits of our application and whether or not they will fund it. The approach by the feds on these funds is typically, this is money to get you started in a program, and we often have to include in our application a plan for sustainability should the money not be approved in the future. Sometimes these grants go for two, three years, four years, sometimes five. It is unusual to see, in my opinion, a third year in a row get approved like this. I think a lot of this has to do with the kind of work that we do. We track everything that we do and the proactive nature of the work she's involved in, and, you know, it's a good use of the money, I assume, in the opinion of the state of Kansas. And so if the money is not approved, the next time the grant opportunity comes up, and I'm assuming it'll come up again next year, it may not. If it does not, we are so pleased with how this is going. This would be something that we would be proposing in the following year's budget to fund.
Good, because I think that, hopefully, that goes into regular budget at some point. Like you said, you just never know with grant money how those will be utilized, but being a university community, it just makes sense to have a victims advocate. And I think when I, I don't know if it's the, one of, a similar piece at Kansas State University just got funding for $350,000, I believe. I don't know if it's their cares unit at K-State or which one it is. So partnerships and such, I'm sure you're already looking at things like that. But I really appreciate what Melissa Mosher's been doing in our community, and I hope we can sustain that position and have a funding source to that, should this not be granted in the future, so.
That would be my goal, and you mentioned some other partners. She works very closely with the Crisis Center as well. She works with the victim advocates at Fort Riley. So we know that our population is not stagnant, and only here. They often are transitory between here and other communities. She does a great job of working with them to make sure that services, no matter where a crime occurs or someone lives, there's some seamless delivery of those services. So that's part of why she's so valuable to us.
Absolutely, and I do agree with Mayor Butler about the social media piece. I think when you highlight your employees, such as Melissa, or your correctional officers, or whomever it might be, it also shows, introduces them to the community, but also the projects they're working on, like the scam and fraud that are happening as well. So Erin is doing a terrific job as well, so thank you.
Thank you, and I'll, if I could just elaborate a little bit on what you just said. I think it's critically important with what has happened across the country over the last year and a half to continually humanize our employees, introduce them to the community, let the community get to know them. If social media is the way to do it, we will do it. I think it strengthens the relationship we have with everybody that we serve.
So besides public safety, obviously, the commission's main extra interest with the RCPD is the budgeting, and so I'll just throw it out there to just, I don't get the paper anymore, and I was on vacation for a while, so I may have missed it. But can you talk just a little bit about, as you approach the end of the year, the money that you had saved from not being able to hire the people you wanted to hire and stuff? What are your plans, and what were your plans, are your plans? How have you allocated what's left and what do you think you'll have left over?
You know, we did make a presentation to the Law Board at the last meeting about some projects that we would like to use those funds for. Some of it is going to be devoted to some of our reserve funds, the Workers' Comp Reserve Fund, our IT Reserve Fund. Those are things that we know those reserve, because we're self-insured in many ways, but also the IT Reserve Fund is because we're having some pretty hefty replacement projects coming up in the IT realm. As you've seen, you know, cybersecurity is a big deal, and a lot of these replacements deal with those types of issues. Also, we needed to replace one of our vehicles, not a patrol vehicle. We have an older duly pickup truck that's a gas engine vehicle that doesn't have the kind of torque and horsepower we need to haul around our barbecue trailer and our stop movement trailer, which we use for game days. So we have used some of the money to purchase those items. There's an e-citation project that we have been working on for a couple of years. What this is about, it's about electronic ticketing and notices to appear for minor offenses. Many departments have used this. I used it where I was before, and this really is designed to streamline the issuing of a citation where there's less contact between the officer and a driver or someone who's being arrested. Those tickets, it's all data collected, and then it gets dumped into our records management system. And now, instead of having a manual entry through paper tickets, the plan is to then transfer that to both the municipal and district court. Fewer mistakes, court dates, statute numbers, fines, fees, all of those things are built into the system, so it cuts down on human error. I think as we, as I stand here now, I didn't come prepared. I think we have about $400,000 left at this point that has to be encumbered before the end of the year, but can be, we try to cut it off in March, the end of March, to spend that money. The carryover for the following year, we shoot for about $100,000, just so we have cushion if something happens unexpectedly. So that's generally where we are right now and what we're using it for.
I've never gone to look for, like, Law Board minutes or agendas, or would that presentation be on some website?
Yes.
Is that through RCPD's website, or is that through?
Yeah, it's on our website. I'm not sure if the city carry, keeps that as well, but it's on our website, yes.
Okay, all right, I'll go look at it later, and thanks.
Sure.
You might say the source of the money?
It's through our budget.
Yeah, but it's unused personnel funds?
Typically, that's what we're talking about.
During COVID, when you couldn't hire and didn't hire, and, I mean, I think that explanation is important, too.
Yeah, the money is unused personnel funds, and as a courtesy to the Law Board, we go to the Law Board and we say, "We were unable to fill these positions." I do want to fill my positions, trust me on that. We're not trying to save this money by not hiring, but once the money is allocated through the budgeting process from the Law Board, there's not a mechanism like there is for cities and counties to return unspent money to a general fund, for example. So the funds that I mentioned, like the reserve funds, they're really, about half of the money goes into those to replenish those and make sure that we have sufficient balances in there. But it is unused personnel funds.
And I know that the city has them, the county, every government entity probably has them, because they don't, can't overspend, so zero is hard to land on sometimes.
It is.
I wanted to ask, in the Aggieville situation, I saw your appeal for any video from the public. Did the public respond to that? Was that helpful?
We have collected evidence from other people.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, again, I don't want to get into the details of it at this point, but yes.
No, I just wanted to know if it was productive, and, because I know, I saw the appeal about using the videos at people's homes, like they have directed at their driveway or street, and I just wanted to, I think that's just becoming so commonplace that we don't even think twice about it, but in a case like this, it would also be very beneficial.
We did have citizens cooperate and provide needed information to us. Without that, we wouldn't have made an arrest today.
Yeah.
I don't know if we would have made one or when we would have made it, but we made it today because of cooperation from citizens. The fact that it's an ongoing investigation, that appeal means it can't hurt to have more. There's other perspectives and vantage points of what happened that night. It would either usually strengthen our case to collect more, so we're not going to stop until it just stops coming in.
With regard to the victims advocate funding, I think it would, might be helpful for you to leave, when you leave, a, provide a list of recommendations. That seems like one that ought to be on there, that, something that you would hope that the community would support in the future, because there may be some things on your list that we haven't thought about yet.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. Might give it to Law Board.
Okay, I guess if no one has any other questions, excellent update. Appreciate you taking the time to come down and speak with us.
Thank you. Merry Christmas and have a good 2022.
To you, too. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is Plaza West Final Redevelopment Plans Concepts Presentation. And are you going to lead that, Jason, or we have folks online? Is Wendy going to do that up there?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Yep, you can take it from there.
I'm Wendy Van Dyne. Yep, I'm here to give an update on the study process for the Plaza West Small Area Wide Plan. Again, we appreciate an opportunity to give you an update in terms of the information that we've gathered and some of the recommendations that we've concluded upon as we wrap up the study over the next week or two, as we close out the end of the year. Again, want to express our appreciation for having this opportunity here this evening. I know several of you have been engaged in attending some of our community outreach events and open houses, and this is our chance to share our final recommendations to you, excuse me, as you continue these conversations once this, once this plan is concluded. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here, just a moment, bear with me here, while I pull up my presentation that we've assembled with the information at hand. All right, let me know if that comes up okay. Are you all seeing that okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So again, I'm Wendy Van Dyne. I'm a landscape architect and planner with Stand Tech Consulting. I'm also joined here this evening by Tom Maury. He has been leading our flood analysis and some of the floodplain analysis efforts as a part of the study. Tom doesn't officially have a speaking role in our presentation here this evening, but he will be available during the Q and A once we have a chance to present our final recommendations here this evening. Want to quickly begin the presentation by sharing with you the activities that have been completed as a part of this planning process. We are 10 months into the Small Area Wide Plan as a part of the Plaza West study, and it has really encompassed four specific phases. The first phase, which really focused on the existing conditions analysis, as a part of that process, we conducted a market analysis with, which I shared with you a recap my last presentation at the end of July. We also held a steering committee meeting, our first steering committee meeting, and several stakeholder interviews as a part of that kickoff process back in March and April of this year. Once we had our existing conditions analysis, which also included an analysis of existing conditions on the site, we moved into the second phase of our planning study, which really focused on community engagement. And with the community engagement processes, where we held our very first open house back in May, where we had an opportunity to invite interested stakeholders and property owners and neighbors from throughout the area to learn more about the plan as well as to provide input. The third phase of the planning study was really focused on conceptual site planning. We held a number of activities within this phase as we started to investigate some of the different options and potential redevelopment scenarios for the Plaza West area. You can see here on the screen that we held a number of activities, including two steering committee meetings. We presented to you all at your July working session, and then we also held our second community open house at the very beginning of August, where we solicited input and had a chance to visit with a number of interested stakeholders from around the community. As we moved into Phase Four earlier this fall, we really focused on planning documentation. As a part of this fourth phase, it really was about synthesizing final recommendations and feedback that we collected all along the way from the entire planning process. As a part of these conversations, we not only met with the steering committee twice, but we also met with the Westside business owners through their regular meeting agenda to not only present the study, but then also to solicit their feedback and any of the ideas and input that they might have regarding some of the scenarios that we were looking at. I want to highlight the fact that the steering committee for this plan was comprised of city staff, Flint Hills Regional Council representatives, property owners, and representatives of the local business community. Letters of notification were sent to every property owner within the study area, which also included an invitation to participate on the steering committee for the study. And while we did have a few property owners who did participate on the steering committee, those who were not able to participate certainly were engaged with us at each one of our different open houses that we held throughout the process.
Wendy, this is Linda Morris. Could you make the screen, full screen, for the purposes of the people in the audience here and at home? We like seeing you, but you're just a little tiny picture.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure, and I can certainly turn off, yes, I will turn off my, my audio, my videos, excuse me, just one moment while I make that adjustment. Let me pull it up again.
Wendy, it is full screen. I think we just-
Is it full screen?
We'll try and make this as big as we can on our end.
I was going to say, I stopped my video, too, so that we can maximize the real estate there on the screen as well.
And you can, you can turn your video back on. We got it as big as we can here.
Okay.
Thanks.
Sure, thank you for that. For context, I also want to share with you some background in how the study is, is being funded. So this Small Area Wide Plan is being funded through the EPA Brownfield Assessment Grant, and it's important to acknowledge this, because it is being funded through this grant that was applied for and secured by the Flint Hills Regional Council. This federal grant can be used for sites that have made, have been impacted by petroleum or hazardous substances, and this is of any kind. It can even include contamination such as asbestos or even lead paint. And it includes provisions for environmental site, site assessment, as well as cleanup or reuse planning. Ultimately, the EPA distributes this grant to communities and organizations to support property sale or redevelopment activities, and area-wide planning is an approved activity of this grant. So some of the project goals and desired outcomes of the EPA Brownfield Grant include a focus on sites with the greatest redevelopment potential, an encouragement of site reuse projects, which also includes infill redevelopment projects. They want to see transformation of underutilized properties into community assets, and ultimately, they like to see a focus on restoration of the environment to protect the human health and the- to protect the human health and the surrounding community. And it's important to acknowledge this, because for many years, the Plaza West area has been an underutilized development within an area that has a high degree of potential. South Child and Anderson Avenue are two of the most traveled corridors in the region, and are thereby the most conducive to redevelopment opportunities. It's also important to note that limited commercial destinations, not to mention housing, exist for neighborhoods on the West Side of Manhattan, and so redevelopment on this area could certainly help fill this unmet need. It's also important to note that redevelopment of the site has the potential to not only improve the environment and improve the quality of life for residents, but it can also improve the tax base for the city of Manhattan. Infill redevelopments of sites like Plaza West often make use of existing infrastructure without the need to disturb undeveloped areas of the city. So all of these factors combined are enough to, at the very least, support further investigation into whether or not future redevelopment is feasible within this area, and that's the primary outcome of this study, is we want to look at what some of the options are, what could feasibly be supported in this area, and what some of the impacts might be to the surrounding neighborhood, so that you can start to evaluate these as you take additional steps forward with conversations in the future. I want to highlight that the study area for this EPA Brownfield Grant was determined by the City of Manhattan planning staff, and it includes all properties south of Anderson Avenue, west of South Child Road, east of Meadow Brook, and north of the linear trail, as illustrated within the yellow border on this exhibit that you see. And again, I want to highlight that prior to any planning activities, letters of notification were sent to all property owners within the study area, notifying them of the planning effort and inviting them to participate on the steering committee. So with some additional background on this study, I quickly want to highlight a review of existing conditions. And I certainly want to highlight that, again, the information that we're sharing this evening really is the first step and a kickoff conversation to a long-term redevelopment process. We acknowledge that the process, especially with redevelopment scenarios and infill redevelopment like this one, take time. In fact, sometimes they can take a lot of time. However, this is also an opportunity to identify the best ways to increase the utilization of the site, while also decreasing the impacts of flooding, and also potentially improving resiliency for any future development to come. And want to spend some time here this evening talking about some of our flooding analysis, because certainly, as we looked at the existing conditions on the site, flooding impacts have fundamentally shaped our redevelopment plan. It was our top concern from the beginning, and it absolutely guided the design, especially as we received input and feedback from the community. And there are a number of pros and cons that could prevent these discussions from moving forward. While market potential and community need are one proponent of moving forward, and it's certainly something that we shared with you earlier in the process, flooding concerns need to be evaluated and addressed first and foremost. So in related, in relation to flooding, it's important to acknowledge that the previous flooding events that have occurred at Plaza West, and how the presence of the 100-year floodplain will impact development patterns on this site. And while a significant portion of the southern areas of the site is impacted by this 100-year floodplain, including three existing buildings, as you can see here on this exhibit, a large swath of land is also situated outside of this floodplain and is prominently adjacent to the Anderson Avenue corridor. And to better address and protect this site from future flooding events, it will be important to concentrate development activity close to Anderson Avenue, decrease the amount of concrete on this site to better absorb stormwater, and construct new buildings that can better withstand the impacts of flooding, or are elevated to reduce the likelihood of damages from flooding. And it's also important to note that for redevelopment to be successful, it's imperative that recommendations don't negatively impact other properties throughout the watershed. But it's also important that development improve the conditions at Plaza West, both in terms of resilience and impacts of flooding, as well as economic viability. And it's significant to note that even beyond the area within the floodplain, there are more than 11 acres of developable land outside the floodplain that can support reinvestment and revitalization. So here, within this exhibit, you can see that everything within that darker green area is designated as those 11 acres outside of the floodplain area. So as we look at some of these opportunities, and as we assess the impacts from flooding events, it will be important to concentrate redevelopment at the highest portions of the site outside of the floodplain, within these 11 acres along Anderson Avenue, and consider bringing in modest amounts of fill to bring other portions of the site above the floodplain elevation. In addition to fill, best management practices, which we often refer to with the acronym BMPs, these can include things like bio swales, rain gardens, and decreasing the amount of surface parking, or what we call impervious area. Those can also help with resiliency from flooding. And before I move on to the next slide, I, I want to highlight that it's critically important that this increase in fill, as we look at where it could be judiciously added on the site, we want to make sure that it does not negatively impact the surrounding watershed, either upstream or downstream. So to better study this issue, our team completed in-depth flood modeling, which utilized the most current data available by the city, to, to better understand how development at Plaza West could impact this area. So in addition to concentrating development activity at the highest elevations of the site, we've overlaid some preliminary redevelopment footprints, so that we could understand which areas would be most prone to flooding, and prioritize locations where it would be beneficial to bring in additional fill with moderate amounts of earthwork, which could bring some areas of the site above that 100-year floodplain, and, and help them be more resilient to some of these flooding events. Now, I want to emphasize that it's not recommended that the entire site be filled above floodplain. However, it, to better understand how this might impact the broader watershed, we actually evaluated how a full earthwork fill scenario might affect the area as a quote-unquote worst-case scenario, so that we could really identify any potential red flags early on in these discussions. And I want to highlight, again, that this analysis is occurring at the highest level. It's to help us understand at a planning phase, if there are any red flags that would prohibit any subsequent study in terms of adding additional layers of detail and moving forward with some of these conversations. So that really is what the intent is with this flooding analysis. So in total, we analyzed two flood models, conducted with varied amounts of fill, to help bring that developable area above the floodplain elevations. And these scenarios included full fill, intermediate fill, and partial fill, and both flood models that we evaluated, again, using the most current data from the city, all three of these scenarios indicated very few flooding impacts, either downstream or upstream from the Plaza West site. And in fact, in all three instances, even with the worst-case scenario of full fill to the site, to bring it all above floodplain, the hydrologic model indicates that stormwater and flooding impacts of the Wildcat Creek watershed would not be significant, and that is in due part by how stormwater flows throughout the site. So it's interesting to think about the hydrologic flow of how, or the hydrology of the site, and how water moves in and around the Plaza West area. Our analysis indicates that while the linear trail is not a levee, the railroad embankment of this trail actually segregates a lot of the hydrology at Plaza West from the sound, from the surrounding watershed. And without going into too much technical analysis and detail, I think it's important to simplify the explanation to help give better context to how this hydrology operates. And the most simple terms in how we can think about this is that the basin in Plaza West could loosely be thought of almost like a bucket within a bathtub. So if, so for instance, fill within a bucket is unlikely to impact flow of water down the bathtub drain. So the Plaza West area is, is isolated within the Wildcat Creek watershed, and it retains a lot of stormwater north of that railroad embankment, which you can see there in the, in the red dotted line. That linear trail embankment, again, separates the Plaza West site, so that the Plaza West area is almost like a bucket within a bathtub. If you think of Plaza West as the bucket, and the broader watershed like a bathtub. So again, although it is not a levee, the railroad embankment of the linear trail separates a lot of the stormwater flow of the Plaza West from the west of the watershed. The primary instance when this is not the case, is when floodwaters from the watershed would overtop the embankment, and vice versa. And those, those instances certainly have been very rare, and have occurred only in the 100-year flooding events, which you all are very familiar with. Yes.
This is Commissioner Reddy. When you, when you refer to partial, intermediate, and full fill, do you mean, are you talking about the square footage, as far as how far it should go, or the depth of the?
How, how far it should, how far it should go, Commissioner. So you can see here on this exhibit here, again, these are looking at three different fill scenarios, again, looking at where the concentration of development would occur, and which areas of the site would be most at risk. The partial earthwork fill is only looking at bringing up a portion, or a partial portion of the site, above that 100-year floodplain area. The intermediate earthwork fill extends earthwork further over to the east to help bring more of that area above floodplain, but it does not bring in fill to the entire southern boundary of the site adjacent to the linear trail. Although we did study that, which is, again, our, our process of understanding what those potential worst-case scenarios might be, and how it might impact the broader watershed. So over here, you can see those boundaries of that full, full fill scenario, as you see here, but that is not something that we are recommending within this study.
Okay, Wendy, stop for a second. You're talking too fast.
Yes.
Commissioner Hattasell here. Okay, so what do those black lines coming down from Anderson Avenue, what is that supposed to mean? I don't understand.
It's right here.
Yeah, on all three pictures, I don't know what those mean.
I'm glad you asked that, and I'm even happier that we have Tom Mori on this call here this evening. He helped coordinate all of our flood analysis and, and assessment of the hydrolog, of the hydrologic model. So Tom, I'm going to put you on the spot if you want to answer the Commissioner's question, please.
Sure, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
So the, the black lines represent the cross-sections on the current effective flood insurance rate map. So we just, we carried the model over from the current effective mapping, and, and that just, that line just shows where the, the cross-sections are currently, and where we evaluated any potential changes in the water surface elevations.
Okay, so that means where the black lines kind of stop as you go south toward the bottom of the map, that's, you're kind of pushing the floodplain, the floodline down to that point? Is that what you're, is that what that sort of means? Or does it mean like?
It's not necessarily.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
You can't assume that.
Yeah, so it, it's not necessarily depicting the, the change in the elevation. That's just the, the polygon that we drew to represent where we would propose some fill. So the, the change is really reflected in how the water surface elevation goes up or down because of that fill. And it's not shown on this picture. This picture just illustrates the, the different scenarios that we modeled.
I still don't understand, but that's okay.
Mr. Thomas, is, you know, the way I interpreted that was the area in brown, I'm not worried about the big lines, that's where the dirt would go.
No, that's the buildings.
Those are the buildings.
But these are.
That's where you'd elevate it, right?
No.
These, these, these are the two existing buildings on the site. The boundary here is the boundary of fill, so those areas that we would fill in and bring that earthwork to help bring those elevations above floodplain. That's everything contained within the boundary of this polygon that you see here.
So the, the lighter, the lighter blue, is that less fill? I know that's where, how far the floodplain goes, and the darker blue would be more infill? Is, is that how to read that? Or there wouldn't be any infill in that?
No, so, so the blue that you see here, that's, those are the impacts of flooding based upon the existing HECRA's model that we worked from, from the city. So that, these are our flooding impacts. This was how we could better understand where the most vulnerable areas of the site would be located, so that we could concentrate the locations of fair, of fill, where it would make sense to bring those portions of the site above the floodplain. So everything that you see here within the black boundary, can you see my cursor on the screen?
Yes, yes, we can see it.
Okay. Yeah, so everything within this boundary here is what we analyzed in terms of fill area. So with the partial earthwork fill, this is the only area where we would fill in to bring that portion of the site above floodplain. This intermediate earthwork fill is, again, looking at a similar area, but extending it further east to bring in fill almost across the entire northern half of the site here, so everything within this boundary. Now, the full earthwork fill is bringing in earthwork all the way down, even to the linear trail, to bring in all of these vulnerable areas of the site that are impacted by flooding, which is illustrated in blue, above that floodplain. And this is the worst-case scenario in terms of what we looked at, in terms of having the biggest impact on the surrounding watershed, and we wanted to understand what those impacts might be.
Now, that, that makes sense now.
Right.
Thank you.
So what I'm understanding is the outlined black area where your cursor just went through, all of that would be where it would require some type of fill. I know there is a different full, partial, intermediate, they're different sizes, but that darkened area is what you're talking about around that boundary of your cursor, is that right?
Yes, that's exactly right. So we've got three, oh, I'm sorry.
No, so part of that also goes to that, the Anderson Road, then? Up to Anderson Road, it looks like?
Potentially, yes. Again, these are, these are all potential scenarios to, again, at a very high level, help us understand how potential redevelopment could have an impact if we were to better safeguard and bring up that, the floodplain elevation in this area, to better understand how it would impact upstream and downstream from the site.
Sounds good, thank you.
Wendy, maybe, maybe a better word, instead of potential, is hypothetical?
Thank you, Tom, yes.
You know, so purely hypothetical ideas of, you know, of a very worst-case scenario, and, and then to scale it a little ways from there.
That's a, I, I appreciate, that's a great way to think about this. All of this is hypothetical at this point. It's about understanding what the opportunities are, and how we might mitigate, mitigate, and think about these scenarios before we take any additional steps forward.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions from Commissioners before I move ahead?
Wendy, Linda Morris.
Sure.
I know that in the past, there have been discussions about taking out the overpass there and lowering 113. Here, in this, these scenarios, we see it as a dividing line between the, you know, the Plaza West side and the Garden Way side. So if that dividing highway were eliminated, or reduced, I guess, how would that impact your, your recommendation, I guess?
Yeah, that's a great question, Commissioner. You know, it's, honestly, I think if that were the case, our, our planning scenarios considered not necessarily how the South Child's corridor, or the South Child intersection, we, we actually, so we included considerations in terms of if that were to come to, to grade, you know, and how that might impact the site. Now, understanding, again, some of the long-term plans and how far out that might be in the future, we did not want to hinge any of our recommendations on that coming to fruition. So therefore, none of our modeling took that into consideration. I will say that if that project were to move forward, this, this flood model would need to be revisited to better understand how the hydrology would be impacted.
Okay, that's reasonable. Thank you, Wendy.
All of these are great questions, and we appreciate you stopping us in the midst of the, the presentation to ask them in real time. I can assure you that if you're having these same thoughts, many others are as well. So we appreciate an opportunity to explain some of this very technical information further with each of you. I, I want to quickly highlight a few of our key takeaways from this flood analysis. As I mentioned, you know, again, a full technical analysis of the impacts of a proposed development or a hypothetical development has not been done yet. These are all conceptual and hypothetical ideas. But it's important to emphasize, just as you asked Commissioner Morris, that if anything definitive moves forward or, or gets proposed, it would need to be analyzed, like any development in the city, or in the floodplain specifically. So we want to emphasize that. However, at a planning level perspective, which is where we are right now, there have been no red flags that would suggest that continued discussion and analysis of this site would not be worthwhile. And in fact, it's in the best interest of the city, and of property owners, and stakeholders, to move forward with identifying potential. to move forward with identifying potential opportunities to improve the Plaza West area. So, again, a few key takeaways from this analysis include clustering development on higher ground along Anderson Avenue outside of the floodplain, decreasing the amount of impervious area, which includes surface parking, especially some of those underutilized parking lots on the southern areas of the site, and remove a lot of that existing pavement so that you can increase the permeability for stormwater and even help improve some of the resiliency of the site. Think about the feasibility of maintaining some of those existing buildings. I know there are two buildings that are certainly within impacts of flooding, but it's worth working with property owners to address how they might remain or, or even be replaced in the future to address broader resiliency. Certainly, if they stay, what are some of those measures that could be put in place to help them be more resilient to flooding impacts? However, if they are replaced, thinking about replacing them with smaller footprint, higher-density buildings, if that's something that would be of interest in the future. It's also important to continue the assessments of flooding impacts at each level of the development process. So, again, this is a very high level, but as you start to think about potential redevelopment or hypothetical development scenarios that are starting to bear more weight and receive more interest, there's going to be another more detailed level of flooding analysis that will have to occur. So, it's, again, moving forward with that thoughtful consideration. And, again, I want to emphasize that this will need to be a long-term conversation, and it's going to require analysis and back-and-forth community dialogue, and redevelopment will not happen overnight. However, again, our initial review indicates that redevelopment can occur in a way that minimizes the impacts from flooding and is more resilient from future events. So, before I move off of this slide and start to share some of our preliminary scenarios with you, I, again, want to highlight that due to variables in hydrology, no plan can completely guarantee against flooding impacts. However, redevelopment improvements can help reduce the likelihood of negative impacts and also improve the site for a higher and better use by the community, which is one of the primary objectives of the EPA Brownfield Grant, which has been funding these efforts. So, I'm going to move into some presentation of our recommended concepts. Our presentation this evening is not seeking a formal action or approval or adoption by the City Commission. It's more so that we can share our final recommendations as we compile all of this information into a study, which the city planning staff and engineering staff can have as a tool as they assess potential options for the site in the future. When I met with you back in July, I did provide an in-depth analysis into our market findings, but I want to just quickly recap them here this evening, again, because it is important before I share our redevelopment scenarios. And, again, this is just as important as looking at some of the flooding impacts, that we understand the market of the area and what can support hypothetical and potential redevelopment scenarios. So, we looked at all of those existing market trends. We also included an analysis of some previous concepts that were developed by students at Kansas State University, and within our market analysis, we were able to better understand the current market trends that would help support the long-term viability of redevelopment at the Plaza West site. And among the key highlights from this exercise included opportunities for retail, multifamily housing, and hospitality. So, to quickly highlight for retail, some important considerations, primarily improved access along Anderson Avenue. That's going to be very important to support retail activity. And there may be a demand for a character district that emphasizes dining and entertainment, and this could potentially address an unmet need in the Manhattan region, especially on the western areas of the community, and potentially to leverage some of the existing neighborhoods that exist within this area of Manhattan. This area could also support multifamily housing, and it could be a really good candidate for the site, and it could potentially target a medium-income rental demographic in comparison to some recent housing developments. And it could further be strengthened by tying into existing site amenities, including the multi-use trail in Wildcat Creek, and also by creating a set of retail and entertainment amenities on the site, and through capitalizing on the opportunity for excellent landscape design and outdoor gathering spaces. The third market analysis trend that we really saw as a good fit for this area is hotel and hospitality development, and this could be potentially viable, especially as you think about retail and dining establishments and entertainment-oriented retail districts. So, again, to further support both multifamily housing, retail, and hospitality, site enhancement is going to be key, and that includes attractive landscaping and amenities that help support a sense of place. And this helps further illustrate some of the things that we're thinking about. So, this mixed-use approach would elevate the visibility of development at Plaza West as well as concentrate new construction outside of the floodplain here along Anderson Avenue. It's also important to note that the amount of impervious area, again, those surface parking lots, all of that that currently exists would also be decreased throughout the site so that you can help address and improve some of the stormwater challenges that remain. So, while the amount of impervious area that we looked at with some of our hypothetical redevelopment concepts has been reduced, and, you know, while we have looked at some preliminary concepts which we shared at each of our community, community open houses, as you'll see here in one of our earlier exhibits, the existing buildings will still remain susceptible to some flooding events. So, all of the, the concepts that we evaluated beg the question, should they be replaced with new construction that is located on portions of fill that would bring the developed area fully above the floodplain, as you can see here with some of these areas on the eastern portions of the site? Or should the two existing buildings be, remain into the future? And, and I think ultimately, we don't have a specific direction identified within this study. I think each of the different scenarios that we've assembled carry their own pros and cons, but we've gathered them here for consideration so that, again, they can continue to be assessed not only by the city but also by property owners and interested developers throughout the area. So, I quickly want to dive into those three plan concepts that we've been developing to explore these ideas. So, this first planning scenario considers how the two existing buildings can remain at the site, and the two existing buildings that we see here are these two in gray. All of the new development that's occurring along Plaza, or along Anderson Avenue would all be new construction. So, while these two existing buildings can remain on the site, they still will remain open to continued impacts from flooding. However, all of the areas adjacent to Anderson Avenue could be replaced with higher-density, multi-story structures to help, again, get them above that floodplain area and design it in a way to be more resilient. I think it's also important to note, too, that right now, the entire area of Plaza West is predominantly impervious area, so it's got more concrete on it than it does green space, which can sometimes exacerbate some of the stormwater issues that you experience. So, right now, those impervious areas are about 66% of the entire area of Plaza West, and this plan actually reduces those concrete areas by more than 19%. So, you can see here down, especially on the southern reaches of the site, those areas are being taken out and replaced by more green space. So, again, some, some key considerations that I, that I might quickly highlight here. A main entrance off of Anderson Avenue has been proposed at Waters with two additional right-in and right-out entrances off of Anderson Avenue so that you are streamlining the access point off of Anderson Avenue and making it safer to maneuver in and out. And this main entrance here has been planned to be developed with multi-story mixed-use construction and on-street parking, which is somewhat reminiscent of those roadways along Point or in Aggieville that we're starting to see developed more and more. Multifamily housing could be developed along the west of the main entrance with tuck-under parking, and surface lots could be interspersed throughout the site with green spaces to help mitigate some of those stormwater impacts. And mixed-use commercial developments, including hospitality and restaurants and some retail, could be constructed over here, closest to that intersection of Seth Child and Anderson Avenue. And some of the feedback that we heard from stakeholders expressed quite a bit of interest in a hospitality feature over here. Some other key areas that you might think about, too, as you come into the site are primary entrance plaza here to help provide that sense of place and to help showcase some of the existing buildings on the site, and also to provide some linkages to outdoor green spaces and help provide greater connectivity. And then also over here on the southeast part of the site, perhaps a hospitality food hall or community venue could be situated over here to further enhance the activity of the site and provide a gathering area for adjacent neighborhoods and for those throughout the community. And finally, connectivity really is truly important, especially pedestrian connectivity, and a linear trail connection and an extension to State Street over here on the west could certainly be one way that could further support that, that connectivity and reinforce the connection to adjacent neighborhoods. Our second planning scenario is very similar to that first one. However, the key consideration here, which you might notice, is rather than having those two existing buildings remain, this scenario evaluates what it might look like if they were to be replaced with two new structures, or two new buildings, again, with a smaller footprint, but they could be multiple stories so that you, again, get similar square footage and still get a maximum density within the site. A lot of the other key elements remain, including the signalized intersection off of Waters, some of the hospitality areas, the multifamily areas, the open green spaces out here, and the hospitality food truck venue down here in the southeast portion of the site. But I want to highlight that in this scenario, you also get further reduction in impervious area, and this plan actually reduces impervious area by more than 26%. And I, I want to highlight that even though we're reducing the amount of surface parking and concrete on the site, we're still meeting all of the parking requirements that exist within the current development code of the city. So, this would still provide ample parking to support all the uses that we've defined here in these concepts. The third planning scenario, again, very similar, but it actually considers removing the two existing buildings at the far southern reaches of the site and looks at increasing the density through perhaps even higher stories of, of buildings or higher structures here along Anderson Avenue. So, again, this, this does reduce the overall developed area of the site, and I will say you likely will not get the same development square footage with this scenario as you do with the previous two. You do get quite a bit of green space, which results in a very drastic reduction of impervious area, and it actually is reduced by more than 30%. So, within this scenario, you have actually more green space than developed area. Now, while this can provide some benefits with stormwater considerations, you also have to think about the maintenance of some of these green spaces and who takes over that green spaces and, or, and who takes over that maintenance and some of the cost implications for the long term. So, again, each of these different development scenarios have their own set of pros and cons, but what we aim to do through this study is to provide some options that you can consider and move forward through various avenues of community dialogue. One of the key considerations also, in addition to flooding and market context, is accessibility off of Anderson Avenue. And while I mentioned earlier with, with the concepts that having a controlled intersection of Waters will be really important, it's also going to be valuable to assess if it makes sense to extend a connection off of Reith. Now, we certainly want to be cognizant of the existing residential neighborhoods that exist over here, so even if a formal extension of Reith isn't brought into the site, you still could have an extension of State Street, which could bring greater pedestrian connectivity into the trail as well as vehicular and roadway access into the site, and you could still maintain these residential neighborhoods to the west. However, another option that might need to be assessed in the future is if you added a second controlled intersection at Reith, which, of course, if you did so, would have an impact on some of those residential neighborhoods. At this point in the planning process, we are not endorsing a specific scenario. We're merely raising the point that those access points off of Anderson are going to have to be a key consideration as these conversations move forward. As we run out our presentation here this evening, I want to share a series of renderings that depict how the site could appear if the two larger existing buildings remain, as you see. And this is all based on what you saw and what we outlined in Option A. They also illustrate how new development can hug the Anderson Avenue corridor, and also include a variation of architectural character that reflects regional materials such as limestone. And this view that you see here illustrates how this area might appear looking towards the southwest from Seth Child Road and Anderson Avenue. So, again, all of our scenarios kept in mind the Seth Child and Anderson Avenue intersection as it currently stands, and acknowledged that if development happens over here, you're still going to have to address those facades and those buildings and make sure that, that architectural character is something that's interesting to look at, especially with all of the traffic that comes down Seth Child Road on a consistent basis. This rendering helps illustrate what an arrival plaza might look like if you work within the context of those two existing buildings here, and you can really see that it helps provide a sense of arrival, helps to note a sense of place, and even helps frame some of the views to some of the green space amenities that are at the southern reaches of the site. Again, and that could even include an outdoor amphitheater, which I'll share here on the next slide. With the removal of a lot of that concrete here on the far southern reaches of the area, you have a real opportunity to develop some nice community amenities within this green space that can still be designed in a way that is resilient to the impacts from flooding that might occur, and is, is resilient and supportive of community activities for the surrounding neighborhoods. To the east of the car museum over here, this view helps illustrate what an outdoor food and beverage hall might look like if it were introduced on this site, and, and this facility could be designed in a way that is resilient to flooding. For instance, it could be easily cleaned following flood events with perhaps roll-up doors and polished concrete floors that could, again, help be resilient to cleanup events. And it could also be constructed on film material, which, again, could help elevate it above the existing floodplain. Behind this area, this rendering also helps illustrate how some of that green space could all be, could also be allocated for stormwater drainage for detention ponds and also be returned to a more natural environment, which, which would be beneficial for the site. The final rendering that I'd like to share this evening looks at that State Street extension and with the linear trail connection here. Again, connectivity is going to be really important, especially as this area could become a destination for many of the neighborhoods on the west side of town. Again, this helps illustrate what a trailhead could look like for the linear trail on the Plaza West site and still address that connectivity for the adjacent neighborhoods. So, that's a summary of the findings and our recommendations from this 10-month planning process. You might be wondering what next steps could be, and as we document all of these recommendations for the city staff to have on hand, we're also going to be including an implementation matrix or what some implementation priorities might look like as you assess next steps and begin to continue these community conversations. Among these, we've got prioritization of high priority implementation measures or priorities, and then medium-level priorities, and then low-level priorities. It's worth noting that some of the high-level priorities are identifying funding support for new development, so that's, of course, working with city staff to better understand what those funding mechanisms might be available throughout the community to support revitalization of the Plaza West site. Another key consideration and important step forward is going to be reevaluating the traffic flow for Anderson Avenue, again, looking at those controlled intersections and, and how that could support revitalization of this area. It's also going to be important to consider decreasing the impervious areas, get rid of, get rid of some of those dilapidated surface parking areas, again, to just help with some of those stormwater concerns that continue to linger. Some of the more medium-level priorities that we've assessed would certainly include improving pedestrian connectivity, especially along Anderson Avenue, also repurposing open areas for green spaces, and improving pedestrian connectivity for adjacent neighborhoods. And then finally, the lowest level of priority is keeping in mind the existing public work site and how that also might play into the broader redevelopment scenarios for this study area. So, with that, I'm going to conclude sharing of the presentation here this evening and open it up for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Wendy. I think this is more comprehensive than the one that was presented in the summertime, so I appreciate that. I was part of some of the community dialogue that you had at the museum, and I also, I think I watched, I, today, in fact, I watched the video, the recording that you had with the Flint Hills Regional Council, and I participated in that a few weeks ago as well. So, I think in the priorities, probably the flooding one should also be there somewhere, unless that goes into identifying funding support. unless that goes into identifying funding support. So my questions are, I saw the four renditions that the students proposed after the flooding, and in their proposals, they went to Gardenway Apartments past Seth Child, so they did take all of that into consideration, and I think that's going to have a big impact on this as well. If we develop this area, we also need to do that part at the same time, otherwise the water is going to probably go that direction, which is something where we want to try to prevent or slow down. And when it comes to cost, I think the infill, I guess it depends on who's paying for that infill, if it's private or if it's the city, and how much cost that it's going to require, I'm not sure. And I don't know how many of the homes we bought out on that end of town, and if that has an impact on... Chad, do you know how many homes we bought out? Did we buy out any homes on that end, first of all?
Yeah, we have bought five, I do believe, homes along Reef or Village that are, have to remain as open space per the grant we received to do that. So, that's really why we incorporated that whole area, is because we already own at least five, and we're trying to secure grants to help purchase other properties and get them out of harm's way, so we'd have a fairly nice open space that could be an amenity if we wanted it to be, and so, we have some assets there.
So they have to be open space?
They do have to be open space.
And I would assume if there's any construction going on in that area, that they would require flood insurance for any businesses or anything that are developing?
It certainly would be smart. There are a variety of paths one could take to lessen their flood risk, or flood insurance needs or requirements, but it definitely would be smart.
Out of the three or four scenarios that were shown, I think I like the smaller footprint. Of course, I didn't have the two large buildings that we have there right now. I think that would be best if we had more green space in that area and develop closer to Anderson. And there was a lot of buildings that were shown in all three of the scenarios, so I don't know how that looks, but flooding is the major issue, and making sure we're not sending the water somewhere else and causing a problem there. So, and the road is going to change, that Seth Child intersection is definitely going to change, so that's also going to be a long-term conversation as we look at developing that area. I think it needs to be developed, and I think we need to look at it not, I think the grant did an extraordinary job of figuring out the flooding models, what can happen in the development of that area in Plaza West. I think we all feel it's an eyesore every time we drive by it and we want more there. The thing that stops us is the flooding piece of it, so I think this gave wonderful information, and I think the next steps are provided here, but the rest of it also is going to be cost, and how much more we need to look at as far as the comprehensive view.
So all of this, we're way, potential city involvement is not, we're not anywhere close to doing anything with this. This boils down to the landowner, the property owner gobbling up as much land as he can, so then coming forward with some bright idea. We're not the ones pushing a redevelopment project or idea at this point, correct?
That's correct. We engaged with the Regional Council, as well as STANTEC, to explore this site for the community, to look at some alternatives, involve the property owners in and around the area to brainstorm and look at what potential could be at this site. I made the comment back in the summer, half the community drove by this place when it was underwater. For anybody to come forward with a redevelopment type of plan, we're going to have to address it. So I appreciate STANTEC doing the analysis they have. Obviously, they've even admitted they don't have all the answers, but there are alternatives to the site that, with declining property values, with more buildings being tore down, there's some options here as a community and as a city, you know, we can consider for redevelopment.
And so, if the developer is interested in partnering with the city, that'd be one way the city might get involved, and if he thinks they can pull it off by themselves, as long as it gets through the whole planning process, the floodplain process, and everything else that the city sort of can control through permitting and stuff like that, then if he can do all that on his own and make everybody happy, then the city don't need to be involved. But at some point, the city, they can't afford to do what the city would kind of like. At some point, maybe the city would come in and provide some potential assistance based on the value of the corner and all the everything like that.
Yeah, the developers and the property owners are going to have options. You know, if they want to engage with the community and look for tools that can help them on the site, those are available. Accessing public tools to redevelop sites, as you all are well aware, takes a lot of public input and political capital to get done. You know, you have to convince the commission, you had to convince the community that these tools are necessary to bring this property to a certain stage. The other piece of this is Anderson Avenue, and Reef Avenue, and Seth Child Corridor, all of which are part of that Seth Child Corridor study we conducted a few years ago with KDOT. That master plan for that corridor addresses that bridge that goes underneath Anderson at Seth Child, but it also goes all the way to Reef. There are multiple access points that come into this site, so the city will be involved regardless, when you talk about Anderson, but if you get onto the site, like I mentioned, there are tools that they could approach us to use to assist with the redevelopment of that area.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we were clear on that.
I remember when we talked about building the joint maintenance facility. The property that the city owns to the west of this was a part of that discussion to help fund the joint maintenance facility. I'm interested in getting the most money we can as a city for that purpose, because that was what the commission agreed to do at the time. And I don't know how convenient that will be, but that's still my expectation. I really am pleased that the, I'm the city commission's representative to the Flint Hills Regional Council, I serve on their board, I'm treasurer, and I'm really pleased about the opportunity to brainstorm, and that's what I feel like we've been doing, is, you know, what's the realm of possible for the Plaza West site? And I appreciated Wendy making clear that flooding has to be part of that solution, because the community has, you're right, everybody saw the flooding there. So, as we move forward, it will be important that we acknowledge some of those boundaries, at least, for flooding and for an intersection. I mean, this is a big site to only have one intersection, and not have a secondary one for emergency vehicles. I mean, there are lots, there's going to, there will be lots, there'll be lots to talk about. So I appreciate STANTEC and the Regional Council's involvement. And at this point, there is some opportunity for people to have some influence on this process, so the public, and the developer, and just, it'll have to be kind of sifted here, okay?
Yeah, I agree with Mark, I think we're way ahead. I said that before in coordination meetings, that, you know, to me, this is a private business thing to develop, and not something the city should be pushing. So I'd be interested in hearing from any public out there that would like to speak on the topic, so we could take some public comments, especially, you know, from anybody that owns property there. So, anyone, Ron, if you want to talk first, feel free. And please sign in up there and put the address so that the city clerk will have that.
My name's Ron Wells, 3605 Anderson. Beautiful pictures and everything, I've been through this a lot of times with a lot of beautiful pictures. Unfortunately, a lot of times, these don't work out, and my main reason for being here is because I could not believe that a firm like STANTEC would even hint at a full fill, which is not recommended, but even a partial fill, based on not ever having talked to anyone that I know of in the area of Wildcat Creek flooding. It's a very unique stream, it's not like a lot of streams they may have dealt with. I don't know what their knowledge is of Wildcat Creek, and other than picking up information from the city and things. Case in point, I say "we," the city, but 250,000 yards of fill under Home Depot, which is where Wildcat was supposed to be, that's a 201.97 gallon, that's about almost 65 million gallons of water that probably should have been there instead of at Gardenway and those businesses. Since then, the county denied a local Alphonse Erdl building where Pebblebrook is because it flooded. He had already put in a large well and a three-inch water main to that property before he even asked. When it came in the city, it was filled up full of apartments with a big berm and then a concrete wall, which this last flood was right at the top of it. I set some instruments up and kept track in relation to the doctor's offices where it came up to the front door of the lower building. If that wasn't bad enough, then across the other side of the creek, the developer put in, allowed it to be put in, 25 feet of fill and a big row of apartments, so we took approximately 2,800 foot of floodplain water on Wildcat, which we used to chase carp there when it was going through the mottles. That slows it down, and the Wildcat can follow this meander. And anyway, this narrowed it up to about 600 to 800 feet, which makes it higher and faster, and it comes across Andersonburg Park, straight across me, straight to Gardenway. I was really astounded to see the water in the plaza area there. Not surprising, but now the reason I came in is I think that any fill whatsoever shouldn't even be considered, we shouldn't waste the time and money, because it's going to impact someone upstream, because it was near the top of the wall, it's going to impact me, it's going to impact my tenant, and it's going to cause a lot of problems, because we need to learn from the past that we're filling in, this is in a 99 square mile area of Wildcat Creek, I don't care how you cut it, and I know where the water came from, and there is a lower spot in the Old Red Road levee to the west end of the plaza there. So, it forestalls any problems, I just think the project looks beautiful, but I just think that any fill whatsoever should be taken out of the element. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Anyone else like to make a comment? Please remember to sign in, state your name and address.
Blake Bauer, 2801 Palmer. So, I am one of the landowners in it with Icon Investments, Ward Morgan and I are partners in that. I've got a chance to talk to almost all of you. I've actually talked with pretty much everybody in the room here about this on an individual and group basis, whether we've been on committees or not. You know, the STANTEC study's great, it gave us some market ideas, because they're, I know they go, from even talking with Wendy, they go into some places, and they'll be in need, like, there's not enough medical, there's not enough of this or that, and to have us have a mixed-use need here is neat. It means that we didn't have just a drastic need in the community, and that was one answer that, to me, it said, and at least I thought that they did a good job of explaining to the committee over our meetings, that there wasn't just an immediate need, that Manhattan didn't have this, and you need to put it here right now. The second thing was addressing the flooding, and I know this is a lot of confusing, we've sat in probably in more meetings, obviously, you guys have had now two, that you've got to see some of the flooding data presented to you. You know, I know they looked at fill and no fill, I think, at least as I had understood it, maybe a better explanation or a different way of explaining it was, is, and I even said this when I met with many of you, if this is going to affect somebody else, then how can we sleep at night by doing it as a current landowner? And that's what I said to many of you as we met individually. So that, at least as I'm looking at our land, that's a huge question I have. But you'll also notice that they have multiple realms of partial or immediate and full fill, because they were looking at that slope, you know, as it slopes away from Anderson, how much are we going to bring up to even, right, above flood? And that's the question, is how much were they going to bring out of that flood zone? And I think, at least from how I understood Tom Moore and Wendy's information through our committees, is they were doing that mostly just to see, okay, how much effect do we have on other people? Because as Ron had mentioned, there's been effect here, and we've made other decisions through the history of Manhattan that have affected other people. Their data found that it had little effect. Now, there's going to be other people that need more data behind the presentation like this, and we will get that as we move ahead. But the nice thing was, is they did look at that data and just kind of said, okay, there's three realms of what this could do to other people, let's see how that affects it. But then you go back to what their recommended uses were, and they had no fill, really. So if you look at that very first presentation that had the two big buildings staying where they were, well, you have to get everything to work with that. Well, that means that you're really not filling in, because you're building up on the top side, you're building outside of that 1% flood area, so there's not needed flood insurance, that was a question here just a little bit ago, because you're outside the flood zone. You know, we could get into realms where we do fill and make park space or tear down those buildings, there's about, I believe on the tax rule right now, five and a half or six million dollars of assets that's paying taxes right now, right there. You know, depending on how you take square footage of those other buildings, do you want to leave that 6 million? You know, what do we need to do to add, I would say, rough estimates of 25 or 30 million of additional assets there, outside of the flood zone? But now it comes down to, how do we work together? And I don't, and I think, it's not just city and private, but this private and private, there's a lot of assumptions that were made when you take a big yellow box, like was on there, and just eliminate somebody's house on the west end of that, right? That was a lot of the questions that they got, was, well, what are you doing? My house is under there. Well, this is just an idea. You know, we have multiple different landowners there, we have the bank, we have the couple different lots on the corner, you know, we have approximately, I think it's about 14 acres of this total. I think there's some great ideas that we can work to maintain our own stormwater, to not add to the basin, you know, we can fix some of those issues with the impervious that Wendy presented. You know, we'll have to work with other landowners to see if they want in the plan or not. I do know this, we have an underperforming asset, it is at a main intersection of town, and it can add a lot to town. I am excited to see what it can bring. I came to college here in 2000, and Alco and Food for Less were there, I could go eat at Grisly's or El Caz, you all have been to those things as well. Those things have, you know, some redevelopment has happened in the area, some dollars have been spent in that area. I think you're seeing this, this is the next step toward what we could bring and make something really good for town. And so as we look for, that was 20 years ago to now, if we look for the next 20 years, what do we look back on this and say, what does this intersection bring? And that's, I guess what I would say to you as the main landowner in this, I'm still excited about this, I am going to be working on this in the year to come, and hopefully in this next year, I can come back to you as a commission and maybe ask about how we can more formally do that. And the reason I say that is how I can work with staff to figure out all these things. And Commissioner Morris, you said we have to sift through them. That's exactly what it is. Right now, I mean, you might say, well, Anderson, we don't want one intersection, but also, is that my buzzer? I'm sorry. But, trapdoor? Yeah. But I think there's a lot of things to work through, and access on that street is a big deal. We have nine ingress egress with no ways to stack right now, so those are the things we need to work together, and I look forward to doing that with you. And if you have any questions, I'm helping to ask, I don't know how the clock works, but I'm sorry, but answer anything you have to.
Okay, commission has a question, go ahead, since he...
You own the majority of the land there, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this particular item?
Jana Williams with the Flint Hills Regional Council. I just wanted to thank the City of Manhattan, and the city staff, and all of the property owners and stakeholders that participated in this process, and also STANTEC, so thank you to Wendy and Tom, it was a really good experience working on this. And speaking of tools, I have to make my plug, we just applied for another assessment grant, and the very next day, the EPA released its infrastructure funding of 1.5 billion, and so there's a lot of money with absolutely no match available to property owners for cleanup, so I haven't had a chance, but I need to get all this information out to the cities and the property owners, so a lot more work to do. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comments. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comments. Any other comments from the commission?
Okay, Jason, I don't know what else you need. My thought on it is that probably Icon Investments will end up having to take the lead. And I do see, you know, looking at the different things that for sure, you know, the city needs to play a role in, as Commissioner Morris mentioned, we did want to sell our Public Works Building eventually, and that was part of our plan for the maintenance shop. And we, you know, we got the green space down there. I mean, that's our investment. But there is a concern on Anderson Avenue. There's too many curb cuts there anyway, so if we could, you know, we could reduce those. But again, it's complicated because the bank owns part of it. I think Thomas Sign actually owns the building where that tire shop is. And so there's a number of players there. But I would think that the city, you know, could facilitate that, you know, the Reith Avenue Anderson part. And that's where I see it. But I wouldn't expect us to do much else unless we get some proposals from the landowners on how to develop it.
Yeah, I would agree, Mayor. We'll continue to work with them and develop some strategies. And as Blake mentioned, possibly re-approach and see if we can't work together.
Jason, I do have one question. Even before this project came to us, far before that, we were already talking about that intersection in Seth Child with the study and all. When do you see that happening? Regardless of what happens with, but these are two different things.
Yeah, and Rob texted me while we were sitting here. The Seth Child corridor study, we're probably 2025 before we're really diving back into that. You know, he's got a lot going on right now, a lot of different areas of the community. That levee is going to dominate staff for quite some time. We got North Campus, we got Aggieville, got a lot of dedicated resources there, but we do need to circle back. And this intersection of Anderson and Seth Child is a big one, as is Claflin, as is Kimball.
Right.
If you recall, that plan had some pretty drastic changes along that corridor. But Anderson Avenue is something we can, you know, look at with the curb cuts, with Reith Avenue, and I would want to posture our property at the time when we can realize the most out of it. And we may need to watch this potential redevelopment materialize before we get too active with promoting the sale of that property.
I don't see it happening for at least 2023 or 2024 minimum, because I think that Seth Child area is going to take, go into all of Anderson and Reith, all of, I would think that all is going to come together at one time as opposed to doing Anderson once and then not looking at Seth Child for two or three years.
Right. Right. I would agree with you, and we've shared that with Blake. We envision a two, three-year strategy here before we're at a point where we're pulling the trigger on any type of development. And like Rob said, we have to tie it in. It's got to interface with Seth Child. So I really do think 25 is probably realistic for that intersection.
Right. And in the meantime, we can see if any flooding happens to monitor that piece.
Yeah, hopefully not.
Yeah, well, we're having a drought right now, so we'll see what happens. Thanks.
Okay. Appreciate, you know, Wendy giving the presentation, and Tom, you spoke just a little bit. You're still up there online, but appreciate your input and the information that you provided. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Wendy.
Okay. All right, I guess we'll move on, on that note, to the last item on our agenda tonight, which is commission training, and that is probably going to be your job.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for your time tonight. We're going to continue doing some training, continuing from our session right before Thanksgiving. This is just the same slide we had been, kind of walking through where we're at in this plan. Today, we're going to talk about meetings and procedures, go over what we have in place and the changes that are recommended to make. And then after that, we'll continue to do training, but on more specific issues as they arise. Tonight, we're going to focus on meeting management, and that includes how the governing body manages itself, how it interacts with the public, how the agendas are formed, and all of those things. So everything related to the way that you all act. I have a red note here, and it's really important to remember that the only way that any of you can do your job and as a group to act is at a public meeting. So these public meetings are really critical to be managed appropriately because you can't, you know, later on the next day, sign something or agree on something. It all has to be done in this forum. So managing the meeting, it promotes your efficiency, it helps you engage and act productively. It does the other things I've listed here that you can read, but I think it's really important to bear in mind, and I'm going to talk about kind of the ways we can improve in these areas as I talk about suggestions. But one other thing I want to note, and I have a quote here, is that one thing we don't often talk about is how managing this appropriately is an appropriate use of public resources. So meetings, the time that we all spend here, this is from a professor and an author who suggested that they're the largest single cost that goes unevaluated and undiscussed on our balance sheet. It's important to note that we are using public resources when we're here, and so we should use them prudently. Here are some, the seven basic principles of meeting management from the league. These are things that we've talked about in the past. Critical, number one, is that you act as a body, that we're conducting business orderly and efficiently, following rules, giving every member the opportunity to participate. I want to highlight number five. It's really important, and it's something that's really hard to accomplish. When we have adopted rules of procedure, which we have some, we need to follow them consistently and uniformly. When we veer from them, when we allow someone to speak longer, and we go out of our own procedure, we're not helping the people in the room. What we're doing is we're making it less predictable and less fair for all the other items and people. Our decisions, the decisions that are made should be made on the merits. They should be made upon the materials that are provided to you for the whole of the community. We talked about this some at the last, the last training when we used the city, excuse me, the league's orientation materials. They emphasize that you're here to serve the whole, not just the couple people at the podium, and not just staff, but everybody. So you take your information from your staff experts, you take your own experience, your own research, and you do all of those things in making your decisions. But they should be decisions based on the merits and not based upon other factors that might be very persuasive in the moment. The last thing is that our rules should help and not hinder. We'll talk about that. I do want to point out, and I mentioned this before, is we do actually have some very sparse procedure in the city code. These were adopted prior to 1973. I don't know when they were adopted. In our code book, anything that was part of the recodification in '73 just says pre-1973. It could have been 1940s, 50s, 60s, anywhere there. But the critical things here that you all do follow is that you establish your own chairman slash mayor, that you determine your order of business, that you have an appointed city manager, and you created departments by code. And then section 2-22, it is from state law. It is something you'll find in many city manager cities, but it's the provision, the requirement in state law that no member can directly interfere with the conduct of any department except to express direction of the governing body. That's not to penalize a member. It's not a crime that we're making. It's a reminder that you don't have individual authority and that everything needs to be done, and all direction needs to be provided as a body. So I want to briefly talk about resolution, the resolution adopted in 2018. So this was the resolution that primarily we focused on the public comment rules in it, but it does have provisions regarding the order of business at the meetings and some other things. Consistent with our city code, the mayor is the presiding officer, and then the mayor pro tem. It does say that the city clerk is supposed to answer questions of orders, and it has meeting time limits. The reason that we adopted that was we were getting into scenarios where our meetings were stretching far into the night. That is not productive. That is not an efficient and effective way to operate. But we were also doing it so that we could formalize some of our other things. When we did that, we all recognized that it was a stopgap, that what we really needed was a governing body procedure manual, because those things didn't exist for the city of Manhattan. But what this resolution does say is that agendas are set by the city manager. For your regular meetings, the legislative meeting that I've called here, they're set with the input from the mayor, a majority of the commission or staff, and work sessions are input from the majority or staff. So that's something that is in our resolution now. It's also that the member of, the public cannot put item on the agenda. This is very common. It's not to suggest that a member of a public can't eventually get some, an issue raised before the commission. It's that they can't come up to the podium and ask for it that night. Instead, the member of the public would have to go through the appropriate channels for the city to determine whether it's an agenda item. Just as a reminder, we have the order of business for our work session. That's tonight. This is the order of business. If there's a presentation, that's first. Then the commissioners should ask questions regarding the presentation. So that first discussion should be limited to just anything that comes up with the presentation, not giving input or the guidance that's supposed to come later. Public comment is part of this, of the work session items. And then the last one is when you would give, you discuss the items. So whatever input that staff was seeking, that's when you give it at that point. And again, we all recognize that these are no actions taken on these items. Consent agenda, familiar process here, but something I want to talk about here, we do, we do the same thing. Obviously, we don't have a presentation, but you know, you're allowed to ask any questions or comments, have public comment on the agenda as a whole. And then, if there's a need for staff clarification, that would be at that point. If a motion is made, that's when you have a discussion on the motion. One thing that we need to remember is that if a commissioner wants to remove an item from the consent agenda, then that discussion is supposed to go later in the meeting. So it's, so I know the other night, we had an item that ended up taking 45 minutes to an hour, and our process actually expects, any commissioner can request that, but expects that it would not be discussed as part of the consent agenda. To do that, a motion needs to be made to remove that item from the consent agenda and move it to later in the meeting, and second it, and so on. That would be the typical process, but I know that we've allowed our commissioners to do that without going through that. But that would be the formal way to approach it. Our existing procedure for general agenda items is very similar. A couple notes I want to remind everyone of. After the presentation, that again is, that's the point at which the commissioners are invited to ask questions about the presentation. Sometimes there's a temptation at that point to say, here's how I'm going to vote on it, or this is what I think, and you go ahead and give your position upfront. That's, you're getting that before public comment. You're getting that before, you're making those statements before you hear from the public, before staff has an opportunity to clarify if anything. I would just caution you from doing that. We really want to get any questions, of course, that you have about the presentation, any information that you need to make your decision. But instead, allow the public to comment on the item, get any staff. Staff has an opportunity to clarify then. So if the public is saying something that they need, feels need to be clarified so that you have the right information to make the decision, staff has an opportunity to stand up and do that. And of course, you all have opportunity to discuss then. Once a motion is made, and this is standard in parliamentary procedure, and in our, once a motion is made, the discussion's on the motion. That's it. So it's no longer looping back to other things. It's whether or not to adopt, or to, I guess, to how you're going to vote on the motion. Then you have a vote on the motion and an announcement of the vote. I'm not, oh, yeah.
Sorry, Katie, Commissioner Ready. So, you know, one of the things we've always come into conflict is Robert's Rules of Order. So this kind of seems similar to that, but we don't have that type of process. There aren't like consequences per se or anything of that sort, but this is to give us some kind of format to follow. So when you say motion with discussion on the motion, in other organizations I've been in, someone will make a motion, someone will second it, and then the discussion happens. But how we've been doing it is we'll have our discussion, somebody makes a motion, somebody seconds, and then we vote. Are you saying to do it the other way, where we have a motion, a second, and then we discuss?
Yes, correct, Commissioner. We don't, we have not adopted Robert Rules of Order, and this is actually the procedure the commission adopted in 2018.
Okay. Because we've been doing the opposite?
Correct.
Okay.
I think it's important, I mean, it's not rigid. When you have the motion, the discussion on the motion, it's supposed to pertain to whether or not you approve or deny it, but you might have to ask a question during that time or whatever. It's just the key is that you can see the way that this order of business is. It's to allow the commission to get the information they need, to ask the questions, to take that public input, to ask questions, and then to state your position on it. It's allowing, it's providing a method for the commission to get all the information before they make a judgment on it. And it's not always inappropriate to prejudge an item if it's a legislative item. You might come in here knowing how you're going to vote. That's fine with legislative. But the process is for you to at least take in all the information and recognize that you've done that before you make that statement. I want to note, too, the, I mentioned this last time, but the League of Kansas Municipalities, for 40 years, has had a code of procedure for cities. Most cities have adopted it or adopted it and adapted it. We've been, until 2018, the best that we know is that Manhattan was kind of operating on a tradition, a traditional approach to this. And it was roughly, I guess I would say roughly, a parliamentary procedure. It certainly wasn't Robert's Rules of Order. We don't recommend following those. But what happens is, as you have, since in our system, we have a mayor, the presiding officer turns over every year. Because we didn't have a set policy, it, so much is dependent on that presiding officer's confidence with running a meeting, right? So we do have some procedures in this resolution. They were not as broad as they need to be. They're not what the league recommends. What we have is what we talked about, just what you brought up, Commissioner Ready, just briefly. We do require a motion and a second. That's typical, and then there would be some discussion. There's no public comment once the motion is made. When public comment is closed, our procedure says specifically, no more public input. That's it. It's done. Even if that would help a commissioner make their decision, it's too late in the process. That is a fair, that might seem like we're, you know, it might seem in some situations frustrating, but it's fair to the people in the room because they had their opportunity to speak. And if you only invite one person up to speak, you're not giving the others the same opportunity to return to the commission. Our rules in our procedure are pretty, pretty basic. It talks about you can amend a motion with second and majority approval. We can only have one motion at a time. And then we do have a process where it's not described, because again, this was a very general resolution we were doing, but we'd have a question where you can call, we have a, sorry, a procedure where you can call the question. Calling the question is a distinct technique to use in a meeting. When you call a question, if it is seconded and the majority agrees, that's the end of discussion. It's over. The vote happens. So if you attended, I know that Commissioner Morris, you attended the league's training. They call that the nuclear option. You really, that's not something commissioners or governing body members should be doing each other all the time to stymie debate and discussion. But as they say, if it gets to the point where it's not productive, that the decorum is failing, that there has been ample discussion, then it is a technique that can be used, and we do provide for that.
But you do have to have three people to agree. When you call it, you say, I call a question, and then you say, okay, three people agree, then you'll vote. If you don't have three people, you just keep...
Correct.
Yakking.
You have to make a motion to call the question. It has to be seconded, and then there has to be a vote on whether to call the question. Because one commissioner should not be able to, in discussion. That would allow that individual a power over the rest of the body, and the body can only act as a majority. So that's why you have to go through that. If a majority agrees that it's time to shut it down, then that's the appropriate authority exercised, instead of being exercised by an individual.
Yeah, I think we've only, I can only recall that happening once in 10 years.
Yeah.
And I did that on the rental inspection, a question, I think John Muddell was on. That was in 2011, because the discussion was going to go on endlessly.
Yeah, I think, I think, Mayor, that we have some of the issues prior to 2018, a lot of it pertained to the lack of rules of public comment and restriction on those. And so what the result of that was, sometimes it was very difficult to accomplish business because public comment was dominating. And public comment is critical. It's not legally required, but it is something that the commission desires to have at its meetings, but it has to be balanced against the commission's discussion and the commission action. It can't overrun it. In the existing procedure, there are rules of public comment. This is, like I said, and I know many of you were on the commission when we talked about this. This was really the main, kind of the main subject of our discussion. This is not all the rules there. I just put the main rules as a reminder, but the five-minute time limit was a big change. And then also just talking about, addressing that, you know, you can't make personal, the public can't personally attack. It's about city, it has to be about city business. The procedure does say that we won't, that commissioners and staff won't answer questions or dialogue, which is really critical, because if someone in the public has questions, the better way to handle those would be for them to follow up with staff or be referred to staff and go through that channel. Again, if they're dialoguing and trying to answer those questions at the podium, the business of the body is delayed. It doesn't occur because it's being, it's, we're addressing this individual's questions. We do have in our process that the commissioner can ask questions. It does not say in our procedure whether time should stop, but that's typical. That's why the... procedure whether time should stop, but that's typical. That's why the best practice is to wait till that person's done with their time, and they've extinct, you know, they're done speaking, and then you ask your question. If you interrupt them with questions, then there's the possibility that they, that their time exceeds what other people in the room are, are afforded. And again, I've mentioned this, but once, once it's closed, public comment's closed, it's not permitted. We don't invite people back to the podium, and that is in the procedure. So that's where we're at. Before I continue, I can just pause, I'm, I have a couple, I think, five slides of recommendations and a few final comments, but before we get into that and talk about that, do you have any questions at this point? Okay, so, oh, yeah.
I'll make a quick comment. So I have Stockholm syndrome, and I've been doing this for two years, but I remember reflecting back to one of the, before I was sitting here watching the meetings, and I asked you, actually in the hallway, why are they doing that that way? And that was in regard to what was discussed a few slides ago about the procedure of, the commission was, and we've, we've continued to do it, and I've done it myself, talked about how we were gonna vote, before we even had the public speak. And, you know, this is why, during that commission questions and comments, I guess, we've indicated our intent, or where we're leaning in those things. And that was really bizarre to me, as somebody watching for the first time, and, and after being in other settings, but I, it is just kind of the way we've done things since, and I've fallen in line, but that would be nice, I think, if we got back to having the public comment, and then clarifying, and then having an opportunity for the commissioners to at least give the, the, the public the, the perception that we're, we're receiving the input before we're making decisions.
Thanks, Commissioner. I, I agree. I mean, the policy doesn't prohibit, if it's not a quasi judicial item, those are separate, we're not talking about those, it's not a hearing, it doesn't really prohibit a commissioner from expressing how they're gonna vote upfront, but it's designed so they won't, for exactly the reasons that you say. And it, it's a best practice for commissioners not to do that, to stick to the process, because for one thing, let's say you state you're gonna approve it, and then you get information, and actually, based upon that information and further discussion, you wanna flip, you've put yourself in a corner. And so, some commissioners are comfortable saying, I've changed my mind, but other commissioners, even though they wanna change their mind, are gonna be reluctant to do so. So committing upfront doesn't serve a purpose for the body, that I can see, and the process is designed to allow it to unfold the way that you described. So in terms of the recommendations, and I'm, we can go through them all, and we're not, I'm not looking for like specific, I mean, we're kind of looking for general feedback tonight, which ones you wanna pursue, and we would bring back specific changes to get, you know, that kind of feedback on. But the first category of recommendations is to expand the motion procedure. I did send you a link to the League's code. It, it just has more detail about referring, you know, a motion to refer to another body, a motion, substitute motion, all the things that we, we basically avoid those things, because we don't have a procedure related to them, and we're not sure how to handle them. The League procedure is like four short pages, it's not complicated. The bigger cities, the first-class cities have, you know, adapted that and expanded it for their, for their city, but that's just kind of giving us clarity, when we do have an amendment, how do, what process do we go through? It's really helpful. So that's the first element of that. That code says, and it's pretty consistent in parliamentary procedure, that the, that the mayor, the mayor is the presiding officer, so the mayor would, following a motion, the mayor determines the speaking, determines the speaking order, but under parliamentary procedure in other cities, the movement has the first right to speak. The movement, not, yeah. Commissioner, did you have a question? Correct. The movement is the person who initiates the motion. That movement may not support, they might vote, the movement doesn't have to say, I made the motion because I'm gonna vote for it. The movement, the movement can make the motion and, and, you know, vote it down, but the movement has the first right to speak, because they've initiated the motion. And after that, there's a rule in several, that's common across other cities, that no other board member can speak until all members have had an opportunity to speak. Now, maybe not everyone wants to speak, but if, you know, you're the movement, you speak, and then the second commissioner speaks, and the movement wants to speak to again, speak again, they wouldn't be permitted until number three, four, and five have had an opportunity, and declined it perhaps. But what that does is it allows every commissioner to speak first, to have their, to say their, their thoughts, without getting, to getting into a debate over what one said. It's controlling the flow, and it also helps preserve decorum, and that's fairly common in the codes that I've reviewed. This is one that I know is really hard, but I tell, I, I told the city manager's office today, I've been watching, over the weekend, I watched Wichita, Topeka, Salina, Overland Park, Alatha, Derby, I've watched eight or ten different cities' meetings, just to get an idea. And I will tell you that it is common, and that the mayor must yield the floor. That is a critical aspect of procedure, which, what that means is that no commissioner can speak until the mayor recognizes that person and allows him to speak. In these other cities, they might have, they have some kind of signal. So I noticed that Wichita actually has a light-up signal, Overland Park does as well, Derby must use some kind of little just sign or something, and the mayor will say, when, you know, when a motion's made and, and they wanna speak, you know, Commissioner One raises their hand, and then Commissioner Two, and but, Mayor Butler would say, Commissioner One, you speak, and then Two. And I know it might seem, it is, it is not how we've operated, and it might seem laborious, but I can assure you, if you watch these meetings, it's not, it's not that way. It, it really helps control the flow, it controls the discussion, it prevents interruptions, and people jumping in, punching their mic, and leaning forward and making a comment. All of those things, which make it more difficult for the commission to have effective discussion. That's something I would really, I'd recommend. I, I think, like I said, I think it's a pretty universal requirement in parliamentary procedure, that your presiding officer has to yield the floor. So that's something I recommend that we adopt. I think it's inherent in our, in our resolution now. It's not specific in there, but because the presiding officer controls the meeting, then inherently, they should be yielding the floor. They have the floor, they have to give the floor to another member of the body. They can't, the other member can't just take it, jump in. I think if we do this, and I, I really think we need to, we might wanna come up with some way to indicate to the, to the presiding officer, to the mayor, I'm first, second, or third, that's, that is easy. And if you watch these other cities, it's pretty easy. I mean, they flash their light or whatever, whoever the presiding officer sees, okay, you're one, you're two, you're three. After those three speak, then it's, it's not like you always have to be in a line. I mean, maybe number four speaks for a while, then three wants to, but each time, the mayor's gonna say, Commissioner Haddasal, it's your turn to speak. Commissioner Estabrook, it's your turn to speak. It really does control the flow and the formality of the meeting. It, it, I would also say in terms of like decorum, it really helps a lot as well.
Katie, this is Commissioner Reddy, this is probably what would not happen, if we did that, probably wouldn't just say win or something. I don't, it's, I didn't go on to three, four, five, and the rest of them, but it, it seems terribly regimented. I, I feel like, you know, I, I don't know, maybe other commissioners have a different way of seeing it, but I, whether we disagree or agree, I feel like we have a good flow of dialogue, and I, I don't know, I feel like there's a mutual respect as far as the dialogue and communication is concerned, and so I don't know how that would change that piece of it. I don't wanna put in a rule, just for sake of putting in a rule. Do you see a problem in the way we are doing things? Has that been apparent? As a person sitting here, I don't see it, so.
I think this is, oh, Commissioner Haddasal.
I appreciate you not pointing me out in particular, as the main rule breaker here, and so I appreciate you just sort of giving this generalized, so.
Thank you. I, I think this is a step that, if you watch it play out in other cities, like I have, I mean, the smaller cities do, I mean, not every city does it, I don't mean to say that, but it's a common, it does not appear formal and rigid in, in every circumstance. It really doesn't, especially with a small body of five. I watched Overland Park, they have eleven body members. It is a little more formal, because you're balancing the needs of eleven to speak. Derby has five, and it's much, it's, it's not as formal as, as it might look on paper, because it's easy to see who wants to speak, it's easy to indicate, and because there is that, that respect. And I would, I would proffer that, yes, I do think this is a neater, needed rule for this body.
Commissioner, go ahead, Erin.
The deputy city manager gave me permission to. I, I, like I said, when I came into this, I have to go back and think, because I'm one of the few people that has, haven't been on this commissioner, on the future commission for the last decade. And so coming in, I was shocked, this, how this meeting is ran. And I have to remember that, because now I've been part of that for two years, and I'm used to it, and I like it, and I think we do have some value in, in those dialogues, but it was not, it was, it was very bizarre to me, and weird, and out of line with even the bodies in our own community, the school boards, the even advisory boards, like, the way that things were, so I'm just saying that, as a outsider, for a moment, I remember thinking, wow, this is, who's in charge? What's going on here? Is this really how we do business? This isn't how anything else is done. And I don't say that to be mean, I'm just saying, and I'm part of that problem for the last two years, but to be the guy to throw under the bus, and you guys don't have to change anything if you don't want to, but I think I would suggest that there are things that could be done better.
Commissioner Reddy, the, the response I would provide you is, I think it's very important, when our citizens come in, they understand what we're doing. When we go to a USD 383 meeting, there's an agenda with time slots, with topics, with speakers listed. You can walk in the door and have an agenda, and look at anybody who's in there, where are we at? And they'll point right to where we're at, and you can see in the timeframe at which the, the body is discussing the item. We deal with a lot of confused citizens when they come into this room. And what Katie is describing to me brings order to the discussion and the action. It's not as if anybody up here isn't doing their job. That's, that is not the point. The point is, please try to look at this from the lens of people coming into this room for the first time, and I appreciate Erin's comments. As long as some of us have been here, we know, it's easy for us. We understand. But the viewing audience and the individuals that end up sitting down out here on very emotional topics to them can get very confused, as to the process, as to the timeliness of when a decision's gonna be made, you know, just, just the understanding of them getting up to make their public comments, and now how long do I have to wait for the decision? That if we can give structure to what we do, I do think our engaged citizenry would very much appreciate it. And, and some of the criticisms we take from folks watching, and, you know, it, it is difficult, it is very difficult to know when you should tune in to, to a certain topic. When we have people sit out here until ten-thirty or eleven at night, who showed up at seven, I do feel sorry for them. I'm here regardless. It's not about me. We're here to tell you all wanna shut the lights off. But for a citizen coming to, to explore an item, it does beg the question, how long should we be here? And how long should an item go? And some of this process can actually help us get through items quicker. I will admit, the dialogue that you all have, the exploration of the issue, the staff proposals, the questions, the answers, the dialogue you all have to inform yourselves, there will be a little bit of a shift to, I gotta come prepared. Because when it is my time to speak, I need to tell the community, and the staff, and each commissioner where I'm at. And it will, I mean, I recognize that too. You know, the four- or five-hour meetings that we can conduct at times allow you to explore a lot of different angles and perspectives, but you bring it order, you give the citizen a lot more clarity on what you're gonna deal with, and you also will challenge yourselves to come to the meeting with that dialogue ready to be expressed.
No, I, I mean, if we go with all these recommendations, I'm not saying I'm against them. I said I didn't see a problem. And when I was on NEA member, I reported to the Board of Ed all the time, and I don't know that it makes the meeting go faster, because depending on their own dialogue, I still watch schools' Board of Ed meetings, and they're still pretty lengthy. It's good to have timeframes and such, and I, I suppose it gives some indicator, but there should not be this thing that we will stick to fifteen minutes of this, or twenty minutes of that, or thirty minutes of this. Typically, I've always felt, I think most of us do come prepared, and I think that's where, because this is the first time we have a chance to hear from each other, that's what makes the conversation even more in-depth. And if this is another way to do it, that's fine. I think it just changes our behavior a little bit, but I hope it doesn't change the discussion, because I do value what the other commissioners say, and how that's the first conversation we end up having with each other. So if it needs to be in this structure, that's fine. I, I'm not sure it's gonna change some of our length per se. I, I, I don't know if a seven o'clock meeting is gonna end at seven-thirty. It might still go along, depending on what the issue is. But if it makes it easier for everybody else, I, I'm not against any of that. When I was first elected and came here, I was familiar with Robert's Rules of Order. And I don't know, you may notice that a lot of times I don't jump in early, because I'm waiting for, and I, I am guilty, as, as we all are, of speaking too soon, but I tend to wait until after the public comment to speak to, because sometimes that public comment really makes you think about things in a different light, and it's important to the deci, it's important for the public to see an elected official take in all the information, and especially what they're saying, before we quote, "vote." And so that's, I, I was, I had some other point too, but at any rate, I, I think it's important to, to give some order to what we've done. Sometimes we, it's hard to jump into the discussion, I've found, and so there's that also, anyway.
Thank you, Commissioners. And Commissioner Morris, you make, you make a good point, 'cause we've been talking as if this would slow us down or stymie discussion, and actually not having a process, and, and yielding the floor can, can silence a member or two. It can end up where one or two members are debating back and forth actively, and no one can, can break into that. The goal is not to prevent that robust debate, and I, I wouldn't even suggest that this is a time saver at all. The goal really here is to allow everyone to have an opportunity to speak, and to require, kind of control the flow and the interruption. And since I've been here, since 2003, I can say this example doesn't come from anyone here, but there have been circumstances where, you know, the comment was a snark comment, leaned towards someone disrupted, and if you are, if you have to be in order, you're not, you're gonna have some opportunity to think about whether you really wanna make that comment, and you may not wait, because it was really perfectly lobbed at that moment, but you know, two minutes later, it's kind of passed, right? It is, it is important, and I appreciate Commissioner Estabrook's comments, and to satisfy your concern, Commissioner Reddy, this is common. This is not a suggestion that's out, that's at all innovative. In fact, it is by far the most common way to run a meeting. We're the ones who, who have not been taking the typical approach, and, and you have to ask yourself, why do all these other bodies do this? What benefit is it to the members and to the public who attend? And I think that it, it can create a great benefit. I agree with all of you, and having sat up here, I can say the same. It's gonna be a change in habit, and a change in the way we operate. It's gonna take some time, even for everyone in the room, but there's an opportunity, when, you know, New Year's resolution and everything, you make this your goal, and we start working toward it, and over time, this will be the more comfortable way to operate, and it'll seem unusual, where people can jump in whenever they want. That will seem less comfortable, so we just have to make the shift.
Mayor, I might sugge, I might suggest that rather than requesting and acknowledging each one of us before we speak, that we have a kind of order, so for, perhaps, if the, the mayor pro tem, the mayor would ask the commissioners to speak, and we would know that the mayor pro tem would speak first, and then it'd go on down the dais until, and then the mayor would speak last, or the mayor could speak first, it doesn't matter, as long as we had a, a kind of a semi-plan about that order, rather than the mother may I kind of approach. That, we might think about that.
Because generally, what we've done is we've just started at one end, and worked down, or worked this way. I mean, that, that's why, you know, I didn't see I mean, I, that, that's why, you know, I didn't see this a big issue, but I don't have a problem with putting this in place. Fine.
And, and we can talk about, is there a setting when we're doing a work session? Do we follow that procedure? Do we reserve that? When do we yield the floor? Like I said, I've watched the other cities and if, if three want to talk right away, then the mayor says Commissioner one, two and three, and they don't yield the floor, now Commissioner two, now three, the commissioners just go in their order. I'm one, I'm two, I'm three. I mean, it's not like every single um, interaction is that way. It's just that the order is established. So I appreciate your comments on that. Um, the third one is to just further codify that we act as a body um, instead of as individuals. I talked about what our ordinance always said, already says, based on state law. This is your form of government. This is, this is the truth of every governing body in Kansas, regardless of their form of government. The individual governing body member cannot act alone and should not give individual direction. That's just the, the basis for this form of govern, or for this, um, for local governing bodies. I wanted to put some examples here. Um, we, you know, we don't have to talk about like in great detail. But what other cities have done to further elaborate on that framework and Topeka is a good one. It's, it's actually, they must've had some problems in the past because in their procedure, not only do they say that all instructions or direction to the city manager shall come from the governing body majority. They specifically order their city manager to disregard the individual instruction. You have to understand that the tension that exists with a variety of elected officials and a city manager, it can be difficult if an individual member comes and wants something done and the city manager serves them as well as everyone. But the city manager's in a difficult position. Um, then the second person who doesn't come to the manager and ask for those things now has less power than the first one. That's why this framework exists. It exists so that the majority is giving the direction. Um, Overland Park has an interesting, and I can send this to you later if you're interested, but they have a council member's creed. And it has all kinds of principles of being an effective elected official. It, it's things ranging from decorum to prep, you know, being prepared for meetings. It's all kinds of things. But one of them is saying that they will not give individual instruction to the city managers or staff. They actually sign that when they take office. Um, Salina has a process and we've talked about this Mayor, you in particular, so I wanted to note this. Salina has a process where I, I will, let me back up. All these cities say that the city manager sets the agenda, all of them. However, many of them have a process by which the body can put something on the agenda. Salina requires what I'd call a super majority for the commissioners to put an item on the agenda. Um, and when they have that discussion, that, that's only limited to whether or not to schedule and not on the merits. And we've talked about that. Well, I think we've struggled with that as, as a group in the past when we've had discussions, should we take this up or not? It's really hard for it not to get into the merits and where we should go. Um, but that's one way you can do it. I will say that these cities, they have what I'd call the pre-agenda vetting process before the governing body has that question. And that is, let's say you get two constituents who email you and they want an ordinance changed. It doesn't go straight to this body to vote on whether to change this ordinance. It goes to staff first. Because perhaps those two commit, those two constituents have, don't understand the law. Or if, or they, you know, their need isn't what staff or, or would recommend, right? So there's some, there's a process where you can get staff input on those things. So that when the governing body, if it proceeds and the governing body considers putting it on the agenda, you have the information that well, these five people that emailed you, this doesn't serve the whole of the community. That's your charge and also the way they've represented this ordinance is incorrect and that you could factor that in. And, and maybe those items wouldn't even come to the governing body. All I'm saying to you is that many cities, especially with city managers, have a pre-agenda vetting that involves staff. Because you have to think about it, if every constituent email you got requesting action all went to vote before you, you would load up our year and we wouldn't have any of our normal business on there. So there has to be some screening of those from a staff perspective to control um, the overall agendas. On a, this was interest, oh, sorry Commissioner.
I, I would support three commissioners wanting something on the agenda. But four of five seems a really high hill, um, and unnecessary. I think right now it's pretty easy for us to put something on the agenda. But anyway, just as future tends, that, thank you.
Yes, you see, my thought hit that. My, my thought on that was, you know, I sort of like the idea. I, I understand, you know, Ron is going to craft a agenda because there's a bunch of staff items that, you know, we may overlook. But I liked using that uh, coordination meeting to just go over that planning calendar. And then it could be clear to Ron and everybody that there were in fact, three commissioners that wanted to proceed. And when there wasn't, then it just got struck and that happened a couple of times. I want to talk about the library one time this year, but not enough people were in on it. So it never made it on the agenda and I think that's a good way to keep from wasting time. And, and as you mentioned, you know, we're not done with this one yet, the dog ordinance. Because a young lady sent a number of things and, and of course I gave it to Ron. I think the staff tried to smooth it out. She was going to talk at public comment last meeting and she came late. And I, and I couldn't allow her to speak because public comment was done. It was open. And so she's probably going to come back and, and then the whole commission will see her thing. But, but she didn't like the staff answer apparently, so.
Sure, and I, I appreciate that Mayor. I wasn't speaking to any specific example. But just a reminder, based on your example, which I think is a good one, is that the league and EA Mosier, who's writes the fifty-two tips for effective governance is, we don't, is, is not to respond to one or to a small group. That it's always about the whole and it's about the goals of the whole. I, that is not a comment on her substantive request at all. But as a group, to respond to one email, um, and to put that on the agenda when it's not, when it's not the desire of the body or even something staff supports is not how we rec, that you're asked to govern and how the league recommends you govern. Because then you're popping around all over the place. It's ping pong and all over based upon the emails you get. And once the public finds out that you will do that, that, it's over. It's ping pong and all over for every, every item that, and I want to note here too, and I'm going to talk about this again. But something critical is, we know every year how hard it is to adopt a budget. And we know the struggle with using, having, you know, um, a limited budget and limited resources. When we are dedicating our time to those things, we are not using our budget and our resources as effectively as we could. Because we're, we're pursuing these ping pong balls that aren't going to go anywhere instead of focusing on the core goals of the commission and the business of the city. So I think, I, I understand, well, I shouldn't say understand. I haven't been an elected official. But I can imagine the desire to give a response and to give the, give the constituent that opportunity. But from a governance perspective, it's not a realistic or practical approach because we don't have an unlimited amount of money and time to deal with every email request. Or even, let's say there's a hundred emails. I mean, it doesn't have to be one. It could be a hundred emails that still aren't something that the commission wants to pursue or that staff thinks is a priority at that point. We have to be able to vet those things so that we can use our public resources prudently.
Yeah, and the other example, I guess, you know, the, the Northview Kitchen, that never made it on the agenda because I guess three commissioners didn't want it on there. And be, because the staff also did, you know, after talking to Parks and Rec. And of course, all that was sent out and that's why it never made, uh, never made the agenda. So I think, we're, we're doing okay on that, I think. But, but cleaning this up a little bit, I would like to again emphasize just formalizing that planning process at the meeting where Ron goes over the, the, the chart and then he can get a, a good feel for, you know, if three want to do it, then it's on there. If three don't, then don't waste your time on it. And that'll help you with managing your time.
Thanks Mayor. Um, the recommended, I kind of covered recommendation four, but this is where cities have actually adopted a process to deal with um, constituent emails and requests that come in. Where they've actually adopted that it goes to the city manager's office or the department head first and allows them that opportunity to respond. And if it can't be handled administratively, then there's a, well, in Overland Park, they have a lot of council committees. They have a very different kind of structure. They use commissioners, or sorry, council members on their council committees so that person is really informed in that, their, their committee area. But they'll refer to the council committee. Um, Derby actually tells the members to tell the public to contact the manager or they send it directly to the city manager themselves and staff and ask them to follow, follow up with the, with the individual. Again, that is hard. I think as an elected official, you want to provide a substantive response to the constituent. You want to get the information, here's what I learned from city staff. I can tell you, I'm reaching out to you. And I, I can understand that, that, but the issue with that is that the city staff is in the best position to respond to those, to vet those things, to provide the accurate responses. Um, it's much more difficult and, and I know you all dedicate an enormous amount of time to this. You also don't have the ability to do anything individually. So if you provide a substantive response and here's what we can do, you can't actually promise that. And so it, it, it might be, appear helpful to the constituent, but it may not, it's probably not the best way to handle their concern. So that's why other cities have adopted, and, and this doesn't mean that you ignore them. I mean, they, the, the city managers recognize you're going to say something like, you know, thank you for your concern. I forwarded to this person, you know, that you respond, but it's just that you're not giving the substantive response. You're not saying, I'll bring this up at a governing body meeting. You say, I'm forwarding this to X person. And then you allow that process to occur. And if it does, I mean, there are times when someone's going to bring something to your attention that needs to be changed. You allow that process to occur and then it comes back to you for that, for that change.
My only cons, concern with that, with the process is when I refer it, I never hear of it again. And I want to know, uh, like the per, the citizen does, I want to know what the city's reply was to the citizen. And I think I ought to be able to get that information a, a, as a part of the, a copy of the reply or the whole commission, I don't care how we find out. But uh, obviously if we're referring it, we don't know the answer.
Sure.
Yeah, what I've found, you know, I answer a lot of emails if I'm confident I know the answer. Like a lot of times it's just a factual thing and here's the facts and I, I don't worry about that. And then the people say, okay, thank you. I didn't know that. That saves you time. Many of them though, I don't know all the details. And so I have, you know, sent that to the staff to get uh, to get additional information. And I know that a number of them, at least on Public Works, Rob's always pretty good at, he, he replies and sends me a copy, I think. That, that's been my experience. So, so I think we're, we're trying to do that. It's just I make a judgment call on, on each one. And if I feel ignorant on it, like recently on the water bill thing, I sent a big long Q and A. I think you all got copies of that because I, I didn't want to respond because I didn't have all the details. But I do now. So you know, there's no sense of, you know, if I get ten things on the water bill, I can write a factual response now and say, here's what happened and here's where we're at and it's going to be like this, you know? And that's that.
Uh, Katie, does, does city staff keep track of um, some, somewhere about these emails that we, we send you all? There's this assumption sometimes from the public somehow if they go to the city website and they send it to all of us, that city staff also gets the email. Uh, but that's not the case, right?
It is too.
It only comes to us. Yeah. So I, uh, so that, that's one thing. So sometimes people email it to our personal emails because they think city staff's going to see that and block it or something. Uh, so I don't know about that. But does city staff keep track of, for example, the water bill, um, how many we send them? Or who is sending them? Or if it's an issue, how many emails are getting on that from us that we have to respond to? Cause some of them are, are a lot and I just tend to copy that one response that Ron gave to the rest of them. Um, does that matter for the city staff to know?
I, I guess I can't speak to how, I mean, I, I don't probably get as many of those forwards from constituents as say Rob does from Public Works. People are always more fired up about driving around town than, than what I do. Um, so I can't speak to that, but that's something that I think we could talk about internally is how, what should our process be? If, if those are being forwarded to us, then what, what should staff do with that? I think that's something that we need to discuss so that you do have a consistent, we all know what to expect. If you forward it to this department head, you know, how it's going to be documented or what happens versus this department head. I think that's a good point. The, the only other thing I would add from a bigger picture point of view, and I say this, I've not seen your inboxes. I don't know the breadth of emails you get. But one thing to bear in mind is what we talked about the last meeting, that you're, you know, when you remember that image of a runway? You're up at the three, thirty thousand foot level, right? And so I, some emails, it will be perfect, it'll be a policy based thing. It'll be perfectly within your role to respond with that detail. If it's administrative, is that really the commissioner who should be speaking to that? Or should that come from staff? Should, and I, it sounds like, and I, I'm not as familiar with how the water bill thing played out. So I may not have that, but if, if it is something administrative, should that be an administrative response every time? Because that's our city manager's role versus the policy role. And I'm, don't apply that to the water situation because I wasn't involved in the specifics and that. But what I'm saying is when you do respond and you want, even if you're competent to respond, is this your role to respond? And that's going to depend on the question, the subject, all kinds of things. But that's where you should stop and think, is this a policy issue or is this an administrative issue? And then allow the administrative process to work through that issue.
Yeah, typically I've forwarded to Ron or Jason. My, my other question is, some, we get a pack, once in a while, a few packets of mail from city staff that's opened. Um, and, and is there any policy? I don't mind it being open. Most of it i- is not personal anyway. Um, is that the way it's typically done though? I don't know. Sometimes it's after the fact, after the issue's already been discussed and then we get it.
Yeah, there. Mail that's received by us, addressed to you all, is scanned in and delivered to the commission. Individual e, mail that comes through is also opened, hard copy and put in your folders for you. Even the mail I get at the city is opened by the time it reaches my desk. It's open, it's reviewed. If it needs time stamped, it's time stamped and it's delivered to my desk. I don't have anything in my inbox that's, hasn't been opened by somebody because they're sifting through. And if it's junk mail, they don't even put it in my inbox. So they're making sure it's relevant. I would say here of late, um, I, I'm trying to think of an instance where Ron hasn't blind copied all of you when an email is originated from you all to him or to us. Even this morning, I responded to that reporter for the Little Apple Post who contacted not only all of you, but very several staff members. And all of them were coming in to me last night and I told him I would respond. But that's a good example of someone asking a very technical question. We were able to provide the response. Um, and then Ron blind copied you all because you all had seen the email request. Water bill no different. Uh, he blind copied all of you on the response that Suzie put together, which was very detailed. And, and provided you all that information. So if the, if, if you have, you know, if we run into this in the future, it would be an oversight. It, it, he intends to copy you all on anything that comes through you asking those questions.
And then I just use that same one for others.
Sure.
I know, I know Katie, we did a couple, if you're, you're looking at how we did, I had a couple of insurance questions that I had to forward to you. Cause one was a sewer backup and one was the guy that his truck got hit with a manhole. And, and of course I knew I couldn't resolve that, uh, you know, so, and, and you answered them. I didn't like the answer, but it's not relevant. It wasn't for me to make the decision on the insurance call.
Thanks Mayor. I, I think you guys bring up a good point that we need to consider as we put something in writing is that we'll need to consider our internal processes as well. Um, these pieces have to fit together. The way the governing body is operating, the way that you're interacting with the public, our internal side has to complement that as well so that you can feel comfortable doing this over here because you know it's being resolved over there. And I, I appreciate uh, Jason's saying what they do. I'm not involved in that. But that's something that we can continue to keep in mind as we move forward with these changes is making sure you're comfortable with the internal process and that we all know what that internal process is, not just the city manager's office, but the other departments. I think that's important.
So did you send a, Jason, I mean, I would have expected a copy of your response back to the commissioners. So maybe I haven't been checking my email lately.
Yeah, Ron sent it this morning.
You got it.
Ron, Ron sent my response to the reporter, to all the commissioners this morning.
Good, thanks.
And you know, I, this is Ron. Good evening. Uh, good discussion. Thank you. Kind of relative to uh, Yoush's comment. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so um, you know, if, the only time we don't open some mail is if it's marked personal. And, and sometimes mail gets opened that, that isn't personal. Because typically, you know, sometimes it comes to commissioners, at least maybe the com, more common one is to the mayor. Uh, you know, but it's really applicable to all commissioners. So uh, just to, from a timely standpoint, uh, you know, the process is to open it. Is it relevant to everybody or is this really directed towards the mayor or a specific commissioner? So we, we try to sort those things out in, in that regard. Uh, and then since we have the electronic mail of trying to scan it and send it to you versus putting it in your hard mail folder, uh, which we'd sometimes do with, with personal documents. But yeah, Katie's point about, uh, you know, constituent services, uh, you know, individuals, you may have a, a close relationship, but it is a more personal question that isn't applicable to everybody. So we try to balance those and, and everybody else's uh, uh, aspect with, would everybody benefit from this response? So a, a lot of times it is just connecting a constituent to a, a, a question that we can answer that particular question that isn't necessarily relevant to copy everybody on. So that's just some of those day-to-day obligations. But us, us being able to define those particular aspects are going to be important from. are going to be important from an administrative standpoint as well. So appreciate those comments.
Lynda Morris, I do appreciate having you scan and put information in our folders. There've been times when I arrive here, I get an invitation to something that was two nights ago. So I completely missed that opportunity. And so the scanning is really helpful.
I don't know why. Oh, here we go. Okay. So back to where we were, the recommendation five, there are some, I'm going to kind of go over this one quickly. There are cities that have basically decorum requirements for the governing body members so that they are respectful and adhering to the process. I would say that that's not an issue that we typically have on this governing body, but there is an aspect of it that is important to incorporate in a procedure manual, and that is what happens if the procedure's not being followed. So the presiding officer is always, I mean, let me back up and say, this is your meeting. It is the body's meeting. And so the presiding officer is the one who's running the meeting. But if there has to be a mechanism for, like, let's say, we don't know what to do next. We're not sure of the procedure. We're not sure. There has to be a way, a relief valve for that. In Topeka, they have, they ask the city attorney for just an opinion, but the presiding officer themselves make rule on it. They don't, the attorney doesn't decide. They say, "Here's my opinion." And there's a process for the governing body members to appeal that and to come to a different conclusion. I think these are very rare things that would ever arise. But let's say also, you have a presiding officer who's not following the rules. There has to be a way for the commission as a body, for someone, another member, to make a motion to follow the procedure. And if that person can't, then maybe the next presiding officer does that. Again, I think those are even more nuclear options than calling the question. But you can see why they're in there. It's so that every person on the body, every member, is empowered to enforce the procedure. And I'm saying that in quotes because you're not, there's no penalty, there's no punishment. It's just to ask for the procedure to be followed when it gets off track. Again, I think Overland Park has this neat thing, and it's their Council Members' Creed, and I mentioned it before, but it covers sort of the whole of their service. But it does talk also, I mean, it's kind of an overall decorum thing, and it's a neat document to look at. I don't, I don't know in practicality how these play out for them. I did watch their meetings. They're very, Commissioner Ready, you mentioned formality. They are very formal. But there's 11 of them. It is very different when you have 11 people trying to speak. But there's some neat ideas. It's kind of like, you know, a self-imposed ethics policy where we all agree that we're going to hold ourselves to the standard, and we're going to help each other do that. There's some value to that often. Pardon? Oh, yes. I will send it to you all. Thank you. The last recommendations, I just grouped these because they're really minor issues. They're kind of more procedural. I talked about the parliamentarian, the Topeka process. Somebody needs to be able to help. But again, all these procedures, the presiding officer is the one who's in control and in that. And if they're not, then the body themselves. I have comments on that. And I talked about this a little bit. The last thing I do want to note, because we talked about this last year, and the mayor brought it up correctly, which is that we need to adopt some long-term remote participation rules. So when we do a governing body manual, we need to address, like, when you can participate remotely, how often, and what circumstances. That's pretty common. None of that's intended to be harsh to any member. It's just so that everyone knows the rules upfront and can understand when they apply. So that's something I think you'd all agree with. I think we talked about bringing that back with this procedure regardless. So those were all of my recommendations. These are things I want you to think about before we come back. And when I say that, it's just as we restructure ourselves, as we kind of reevaluate how we're operating, and we talk about operating under our legal framework and our practical framework that we're under, think about things. I put some things in here about public comment. I know how hard it was to debate the elements of our public comment policy, but things to think about in the future. There are some, USD 383 does a sign up in advance, and you have to put your topic on there, and so does Wichita. That's not to stymie anyone. That's just to make sure they're coming to the right place. Or, like, let's say they put an issue on there that, "Oh, hey, you can come and talk, but you could also talk to this department and get it resolved." It's really kind of a screening. There's some utility to that. Revisiting the amount per comment, five is the most of any city that has adopted it. Four is probably, three to four is more common. But this thing, and this next, the third item, is something that Jason brought up earlier that is, is common. Not, it's not universal by any means, but it's not, it's in quite a few of the bigger cities, is that you limit the total open comment to a max time, let's say 30 minutes. That's the most common. I'm not saying that it has to be that. I want you just to think about that for the future because, as our city manager's office has suggested, if you have a five-minute limit, and, you know, 40 people show up for open public comment, your meeting's gone. It's lost. Now, our policy, our resolution now does say that if there's more than 10, that the mayor can impose a reduced amount of time. So there is an option there that we already have to control that. But the problem is, you have to know that that's going to happen up front, right? So you have to know those 40 people are sitting there, and then limit them to two minutes each, or that 40 people are going to speak. You might not know that when it starts, and you can't change it mid-public comment. You can't do that. You can't say, "Oh, 15 people have spoken. It's getting late. Now everyone else only gets two minutes." That can't happen. And so it allows that control up front. So that's something I'd like you to think about. The cities that do that tend to limit it to just the open public comment. That's our monthly, once-a-month part. But some, I will also note that we are one of the few cities that allows public comment on every item of business. You don't, you aren't required to do that. And many cities, like, they only offer, allow public comment on certain items. They want the things that you would imagine, ordinances, certain things. But if it's some other matters, or they don't allow it just because of sort of overall productivity. So these are things to think of. Oh, the last thing I did want to note is that several of the bigger cities, and these are the bigger cities, is that they have public comment at the end, not the beginning. I can see an argument both ways for that. If the public is taking the time to come to speak, to allow them to go first, makes a lot of sense. The reason it's been moved to the end in a lot of cities is the grandstanding that can occur. And then a lot of, a lot of cities don't televise it. So again, it's really then just a conversation between you and the member of the public, I shouldn't say conversation, that's not, it's really you hearing that, and it's not being, you know, broadcast to a larger audience. Or it's not, you know, some people are, some people in other communities use the podiums as, you know, their microphone, their megaphone, I should say. And so to prevent that, other cities have moved it. So I just, I want you to think about these things. I'm not recommending any specific changes, but just in light of other things, give that some thought. And then the other thing, and Jason previewed this for me as well, that I really want to note, this is not something that we can decide in short order, but it is something we need to think about. Our meeting adjournment time. So right now, we have a briefing session. That's an hour and a half most of the time. And then we have up to five hours of legislative meetings. So our total meeting length could be six and a half hours. And it's often four, five, or six. I mean, we've all experienced this. I think we need to, you need to give some future consideration to whether that is productive and whether that's even fair to the constituents. Jason mentioned this earlier, but if someone has to wait till 11:30 to speak on the item, is that, is that fair to them? And then also, I wanted to point this out. It's just, it is an actual study, but it's, I'm going to use this anecdotally, but The New York Times wrote about a study of 1,100 parole hearings made by judges. Controlling for every factor, the court appearances in the morning, those defendants, those prisoners were 70% more likely to be granted parole. Later in the day, less than a 10% chance regardless. And the study concluded the reason for that was that the judges' motivations, that they had no ill intent, and you controlled for the factors that you would imagine related to a prisoner probate, or, excuse me, parole hearing. But they found that the judges ran out of the mental energy to make the difficult decisions later in the day. So they went with the safe thing. So I know we've all been here. We, and I'm like Jason, I'm going to be here regardless. But I know when we start an item at 10:30, 11:00, we're all like, "Okay, make it fast," right? Let's go. Make it fast. And I feel that pressure. You feel that pressure. That is not serving our community. That is not giving that item necessarily the time and attention that it needs. I understand that sometimes meetings are going to go long. I'm not suggesting that they're not. But I think that that's something to give some thought to. I've listed for your information, this is, these are not all the, I mean, I just did the cities that I was watching their videos. So I gave you, you know, the, some ideas. These other cities, they don't have pre-meetings. So our hour and a half at the beginning is part of what is straining the overall experience. Four and a half is, max, is the next longest. And ours could go up to six and a half. I think Alatha has an interesting strategy. They do executive sessions before 7:00 PM. So if they have an exec session, they always schedule, that's when, that's their pre-meeting. They don't have a standing pre-meeting, but they'll do an executive session at, like, 6:30 or 6:00. Depends on the executive session, how much time they need. And then they do that before, and then they always end by 10:30. When I say always, I guess I should qualify that. Every city, including us, has a caveat that you can extend it beyond that time with a majority of the governing body voting for that. So it's not a, it's not a final, final end. It's just the majority has to agree to go past that time. So if we were to change it where we wanted a max five-hour meeting, however we structure that in the future, it's not to say the commission can't have a seven-hour meeting. You just have to agree to do it, 30 minutes at a time. So those opportunities, we've had some really contentious issues in the last year. Those issues need to go through a difficult and time-consuming process. You could still have those types of meetings, but what you would be doing is providing the best opportunity for the body to make the best decisions that it can. I don't know about you, but I work during the day, and you all have all the, your responsibilities during the day, and then have seven or eight hours at night after you've had a full day. It can be very taxing. And I wouldn't want to be in your shoes, making a vote at 11:15 when a full room. And I would certainly think, sometimes I feel a lot of compassion for the individuals in the room who showed up at 7:00, and who knows what their personal circumstances are, and they're sitting here at 11:30, and they haven't had an opportunity to speak. I think those are things that you, we need to give some thought to. We're not going to change these in the short terms, in terms of how we, if we need a briefing session, do we incorporate briefing session in another way? Is there some other way to do this? Those are things, I don't, I'm not offering a recommendation on those, but I do think we should give those some thought as we reevaluate how to manage our meetings effectively. I don't know if anyone, Jason, do you want to add anything to that? Or Ron, I guess? Okay.
I think there are topics that we could have, go ahead, Ron.
I was just going to say that, you know, some cities have dealt with this. It's all part of workload and managing that activity and that load. And I know Lawrence is, I'm not necessarily advocating this because it's a, it's a big chunk, too, but they've gone through those. Every meeting, every weekly meeting is a legislative meeting. And you're all familiar, we've probably had more discussion items on legislative meetings that have certainly drawn those meetings out long. And so those are just some things to think about as well as the overall aspect of that. So as Katie said, it's good food for thought, and maybe we can talk about some of those things at your retreat and some of those other aspects as we contemplate some of the adjustments we might want to make.
The only additional comment I would make, commissioners, is more of a recognition of the time that staff and administration, over the years, have put into these meetings. And I know myself, and even Ron included, have taken meetings off so we could go watch our kids participate in activities. But there are a lot of activities we miss. And it's just a recognition that the meetings do occupy an additional, sometimes, four and a half to five hours of our day. We have worked all day, as Katie has expressed. COVID also opened our eyes to the ability of the public to give us comment when they're not necessarily here. And we received a lot, and we developed a mechanism to do that. I don't want, again, I don't think anything we're attempting to do here is to make it harder for the public to participate. But I do think there's a great amount of knowledge to understand from that study, and it's keeping the governing body and the staff fresh. Today, we explored two or three different topics. Stonehaven, decision made after 1:00 AM. Decision the next morning, people called the office. What did we do? Those are difficult decisions being made at hours that we can't even recall what we did as a group. It's just an example of how something can go too long and get down a path that you're not the same as you were at 6:00 PM or 7:00 PM by the time it hits 1:00 AM. I had others, other experiences downtown. The night Hy-Vee was zoned. Mark was here, and he knows it was in the morning by the time that motion was made. So it's just acknowledging and recognizing what could happen, what can happen, and trying to structure yourself to make the best possible decision for the community.
I kind of like the idea, potentially, of starting at 6:30 and cutting off at 11:00, maybe. And I don't know how we do the, we could do the pre-things starting at 5:15 or something, eat for 15 minutes, and start discussing while people are still eating. There's no reason to, we couldn't have some discussion while we're snacking, just to shorten that whole thing up a little bit.
And I'm sorry, the reason I brought up staff, recruiting and retaining employees moving forward, going to be very difficult, much more difficult than when Ron came on, or even when I came on. And expecting people to be here five, six hours Tuesday nights, I mean, I don't know how many people have approached you all with, "That is an inordinate amount of time you've dedicated." I mean, it's our profession. We're obviously being compensated. You all aren't. But it, the community recognizes how much time we spend on a Tuesday evening. And for a lot of them, it's a reason why they won't run. And for a lot of them, it's a reason why they won't necessarily work here. So just food for thought as well.
Yeah, I appreciate the recommendations. I think I will look them over as well. But as far as the, I think we can work on the time and maybe even have some of our work sessions be legislative sessions. Even this meeting is three hours. So it's not, I think the work we do, I think the community respects it. I never come in thinking it's going to be a midnight meeting. I always underestimate how long we're going to be here. Even today, I underestimated. I said, "Certainly, I'll be home for dinner." Well, it's not going to happen. So it's, but that doesn't mean it's a bad conversation we're having. This is something that we, this is what we signed up for. And so I think there's value in those types of discussions. I don't think any of us wants to go midnight beyond midnight. We can work on tweaking some of those. I don't know what it means for not having a pre-meeting, so I don't know how they decide the majority that's going to have something on their agenda. I do appreciate our pre-meeting because that's how we build relationships. And I don't, I hope we do that at least maybe once a month. Maybe we don't have to do it every other week. I don't know. So we can tweak that a little bit. But I don't have, we don't have another place where we can connect with each other, other than those pre-meetings, and have that dialogue about topics that are relevant until we meet up here again. And I think there needs, that's still, I hold a high priority to that. And maybe having one or two agenda items, I don't know. You all have more flexibility on what type of agenda items you put when. We're always trying to be flexible to those open house Tuesday nights, or whenever it is when staff feels they need that family time. So I think we can be accommodating, and some of these things are good for that workplace balance. But I do appreciate, like I said, whether I agree with the commissioners or not, the dialogue that we do have, as well as with the public.
And I think it's, Lynda Morris, I think it's important that we have this discussion. This represents some major changes. And so there are certain topics that do warrant, that do warrant additional time. And so there's that. And some development proposals that pull in a lot of the public, it happens maybe four times a year. It's not the end of the world. And so it's, we have to keep it in perspective.
Commissioners, since there's some, there's willingness to consider rethinking the meeting structure and all of that, I wanted to answer Commissioner Ready's question, say that other, some other cities, they actually have an agenda item that's like planning, or agenda item is council, or, excuse me, they're mostly councils. I look like commissioner business. And so the things that we do at the briefing session, they might be incorporated into the meeting. But what I found was interesting is several of the cities, they're off week. So like the metro area, the KC metro area cities, like, what we have as a work session, we're doing substantive stuff. They do some substantive stuff, but those are also their planning sessions. So they are actually doing, kind of doing on the odd Tuesdays, the work session Tuesdays, some more of that. And I'm not saying we need to do that. I'm just saying there's a lot of ways we could rethink this and make it work more effectively and still meet the needs of the commission and the public. and make it work more effectively and still meet the needs of the commission and the public. That might be, like, I think it is important that we might not get some people running for office because of the amount of time. And we might not get as much public participation because of the amount of time of a meeting. And I think, I want to emphasize again, this is by no way to limit what the commission considers or the public involvement, is to structure it so that it can be, you know, evaluated productively and effectively. And then, also, we could look at other mechanisms to allow for public participation. Like Jason said, there's all kinds of things that cities are doing to balance the time that everyone has to dedicate these things into the reality that we all have to do business. We have to have our business. I want to say thank you. I mean, I want to wrap up with a few next steps. They're pretty basic. But to say thank you, I know that this isn't the most fun topic to talk about. It's really hard for myself even to prioritize these things. We're all so focused on the outward business that we do. So, thank you for your time and attention. I would recommend that our next steps are to bring back a more extensive governing body code of procedure for you to highlight, to give you some specifics on these recommendations. And then, I just, I kind of, kind of being funny, but it's real that two, three are important. After we adopt it, we need to train on it. And this is the first time, I think, since '18 that we've trained on our resolution. And I recognize, and I've noticed, and you guys have noticed, we've strayed from it, because after, over time, I mean, I forget, we all forget what it says. We need to train on it more often. I don't want to belabor training, but we need some training to refresh ourselves on the procedure, and then we need to follow it consistently. That's really critical. And then, the last thing I would suggest is, and this is a lower priority, is that we update Chapter Two Administration. We have these wildly out-of-date provisions about our form of government. It's not, they're not necessarily causing any issues, but if you look at them, you can say, hey, we could, we could make this represent who we really are. There are people who look at those and who wouldn't get the right representation of how we operate, because they're so outdated. There's, so that would be something I'd do in the future. So, anyway, this is the last slide, just to say, we just finished our December 14 meeting. We're going to incorporate more substantive, specific training in the future. And then, I appreciate that Jason previewed the, or maybe Ron said it. I'm sorry, I'm not recalling who. But that, at the commission retreat, it's an opportunity for you to think about all of this. Think about ways we can restructure and give that feedback at that time, looking at '22, thinking about how to fit all this stuff in. And then, in '23, thinking about a new game plan.
Katie, I have a question. Throughout most of the last two years, we didn't have the briefing session. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
I mean, like...
Yeah, spring of '20, yeah.
For most of my term, I didn't have the briefing session. And the only value, I say this as somebody that's totally a lame duck, the only value that I could see in that briefing session that couldn't be rolled into a work session or some other part was the food. And I was glad we had the food, because I got to eat a few meals in 2021. But otherwise, that seemed a little bit unnecessary.
I'm glad you brought up the retreat. Is the retreat four hours? Is it two days? How long is the retreat?
Let a city manager speak to that. I'm sorry.
We're still planning our retreat, looking for a date near the end of January. Usually, we like to plan that following the chamber leaders retreat. We're going to be having our department head retreat, probably here at the beginning of January. And that'll lead into getting you materials to consider for the late-January city commissioner retreat. We haven't finalized a date, or a time, or a time length. I know some of you work. We usually try and plan those on a Friday, try and get as much out of that day as we can. But we'll come back probably at a briefing session and talk about that.
Well, the reason I ask is I think this is going to take some time. But I also want to discuss all of the other stuff that we typically discuss at the retreat as well. So, I just want to make sure, I don't want all four hours just to be focused on revamping our, how we do business. But also...
Yeah. I was saying the retreat, maybe just to talk about the process. And then, how do we want to, and Katie made some good comments about, you know, that we don't want to, we don't have a lot of extra time to rush into having a new draft policy manual in front of you, procedures manual in February. So, it's more like, this is some things we can work through, through the course of next year, and make some gradual implementation with maybe the goal of having that procedural manual in '23. So, those are just that aspect. So, typically, that retreat is anywhere from four to six hours. And we can certainly talk about that. We need to start getting some dates to you that you have some available time. So, again, I appreciate everybody's feedback and discussion.
Thank you.
Just one last thing. Yeah. I love Edith Stunkel, but I think it was around the time she came on the commission that every meeting became a New Hampshire Town Hall meeting, where everybody was weighing in on everything all the time. And there's, and I think it's gone a little too far in that direction, and we probably need to bring it back, whether it's scaling back public comment to, I like, four minutes, maybe cutting it off at 30 minutes for various things. And maybe even, there's no good way to probably, yeah, and we don't need to limit commissioner comment too much. But we're all a little bit guilty of making the meetings last longer than they should. And so, I think there's a happy medium between the way it was in the '70s or early '80s versus what it changed to, and then has gotten almost, almost out of hand. Sometimes it has, obviously. But I think we can all just do a little bit better by focusing.
And if I can just say one thing, I would say, we focus a lot on the governing body functioning. But staff, we have to commit to this as well, and we have things that we can do internally. So, we'll also be doing our side of things to help you, to help facilitate this for you, because it is important that you understand what we're doing so that you can do your side of it. So, speaking for the City Manager's Office, but I know that they would support that staff will, will implement the changes we need to make as well, to help.